Get on camera first.
You can definitely start and then, and I will join in if my computer's not loading as fast as I want it to, of course. So we can start if you want to open it.
I'll convene the meeting and then do I need to take a roll call to open the meeting or?
Not to, not to, you should, so technically you should do a script, but since it's only us, Justine has been doing it, reading the script after the executive session.
Okay.
So during the script, you would get to the roll call.
Okay, all right. Well, I'll open the meeting and I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Second. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, let me, let me state it just for the record. So to convene, I'll make a motion to convene an executive session to consider the lease of real property 63 Summer Street, Art Space Maynard, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the town.
And I got, I got Dave motioned and then Justine seconded.
Okay. And then we will reconvene in open session afterwards. So are we good to move into breakover?
You can, now you gotta vote. So individuals.
All right. And now I'll call the vote. Sorry.
No, you're good.
David.
Yes.
Armand.
Yes.
Justine.
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Good.
All right.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the delay. Just make sure that my board members made it back. Excellent. I see everybody. So we're gonna continue to open the meeting and I'm gonna start with the script for remotely conducted open meetings. As a preliminary matter, this is Justine St. John, Chair of Select Board. Permit me to confirm all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Chris, I know Chris Da Silva will not be here tonight, so he will be absent and I am here. Staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Greg?
Yes.
And Becky, I think.
No, Becky's not, she's on vacation.
All right. Oh, fabulous. All right. And I see other staff members here, Megan, Justin, Joanna. So thank you, everybody for joining us. Good evening. This open meeting of the select board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the select board is convening by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and to take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. We are also, I believe we're also broadcasting on Facebook Live. I do want to note again that we do not monitor chat on either Facebook or in, in here. If you do want to participate, you do need to call in to access the meeting. For Board Docs supported meetings, all the materials for this meeting, except for executive session meetings, are available on Board Docs and we recommend members and the public follow the agenda as posted on Board Docs, unless I know it otherwise. Again, the better, the best way to get, to get there is the town website, to Select Board page, to tonight's packet. And you'll have all the information in front of you. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. It'll go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. For items of public comment, after the members have spoken, the chair will afford public comments as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. And once the chair has a list of all public commentators, he'll call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Well, thank you, everyone. So the first item on the agenda tonight is public comments. Do I have any public comments this evening? Okay. All right. So I am going to, I noticed that we have Representative Kate Hogan and Senator Jamie Eldridge here tonight, and they are giving an update for us. And I am going to ask my board members, I'm going to shift our agenda a little bit so we can have them speak before we do the acceptance of minutes. So that worked for everybody, hopefully. Excellent. All right. Sounds good. So good evening, both of you. Thank you very much for joining us.
Good evening. Thank you so much to you, Madam Chairwoman, and the members of the Maynard Select Board, Greg Johnson and other officials. So thank you so much for having Representative Hogan and I before the board. And thank you for taking us out of turn. Good, good to see a number of you yesterday at Maynard Founder's Day. It was a really, really special event and just wanna praise anyone on the sesquicentennial committee for organizing a really special day to recognize Maynard's 150th birthday. And I know there'll be more celebrations throughout the year, but great, great to see many of you. And thanks so much for having us. Just have a brief budget update and, you know, happy to take questions after Representative Hogan's presentation is, hopefully you know that the House budget is about to be debated. I won't speak about that, of course, but just so you know, the Senate budget will, will happen in May. So I had my meeting with the Senate Ways and Means Chair, Michael Roderick's, about three weeks ago. So prioritizing things like Chapter 70, full implementation of the Student Opportunity Act, special education reimbursement and other forms of local aid. The, pleased that the Speaker of the House and the Senate President Spilka came to an agreement on, on what the Chapter 70 aid will, will be. And so Maynard, the Maynard Public Schools will be getting an increase. I do want to acknowledge it's, it's a modest increase according to the cherry sheets. So last year, Maynard received $5,442,000 and the proposal for the FY22 budget is, is $5,480,000. So want to acknowledge that it's a modest increase and that's why things like the special education circuit breaker is so important because that arguably provides more aid to smaller school districts like Maynard. So advocating for increasing that reimbursement for out of district costs that Maynard encourages for educating special needs children. So that's a top priority. There is a 3.5% increase in unrestricted local aid. So this is the local aid that's not for the schools, but for any other purpose. So that is an increase. Again, I acknowledge it's a, it's a modest increase. And, you know, there are many, many other areas of the budget, obviously, social, certainly around social safety net, emergency food assistance, which provides, you know, food to the Maynard food pantry, as well as open table, rental assistance for people that are behind on their rent in part due to the COVID crisis. More money for, for legal aid to help people in vulnerable situations. And then, of course, advocating for increases in councils on aging and other county agencies that deliver funding or support to vulnerable populations in, in Maynard. So advocated for those things. And I would say beyond that, very encouraged not only by the American Rescue Plan, the, the federal stimulus that was passed, but talk about a, an infrastructure bill, a $2 trillion infrastructure bill. So just want to make sure whether it's Greg Johnson, whether it's the Maynard Select Board is thinking about critical infrastructure projects. It doesn't have to be transportation. It could be water infrastructure, which I know is a big priority for Maynard. Thinking about these projects, obviously being in close touch with, with Congresswoman Trahan, but if I can be of any help, you know, in, in assisting the town on those requests, please be in touch. And just want to make sure that those federal dollars, whether the, in the American Rescue Plan, which I know Maynard will be receiving, you know, some funding, but the money that comes to the state, making sure that some of that funny also comes back to Maynard in, in different forms. So that is, that is my update. Really want to thank all the select board members for their leadership on a number of issues and obviously great to see you all just a week and a half ago at the groundbreaking for the Maynard Fire Station, which I know is a many decades effort that really glad to see come to Maynard. So thanks so much. And again, after Kate's presentation, happy to take any questions. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Kate, thank you very much. And I'll turn to you, Kate. I think you're still muted. But yes, and I first again want to congratulate you. I still get, I, I like every time I see that I see Speaker Pro Tempore.
What? I, you know. Speaker Pro Tem to you.
Excellent. Speaker Pro Tem. So, so I, I'm very excited to have you in that position and, and I thank you very much. So continue on.
All right. Thank you so much, Justine. It's great to see you in your position as well. Congrats, everybody. A great Founder's Day, a great kickoff to the sesquicentennial. I can't imagine how it all got put together and, and the fact that you're gonna move forward with so many events. It just shows the great resiliency of the town of Maynard and all of its town folk and just congratulations. It's great. And we were so glad to be able to get earmarks into the budget previously, to be able to offer up some monies towards a lot of the events that might be going on. So yay, win, win for everybody. It's a year into the pandemic. I mean, we, we were not quite knowing what it was gonna be now last year, but we are a year in. We're in a new session. We are working remotely. That was, we developed that through the House for our 160 member chamber. And we have been able to do most things that, that you would do in the House, but for the fact that we're not in the chamber. So we look forward to continuing to do that. But more than that, we look forward to the, the chamber being open. We've been, feels like we've been here a number of times this year for presentations. And, and I think the last thing was your own budget. But, you know, most recently, the legislature has really worked to avoid, avert some steep increases in unemployment insurance rates, provide tax relief for recipients. And especially a relief for federal PPP loans. Those are, those were forgiven taxes and offering paid sick leave to workers to get vaccinated. And that was what happened, you know, just this year. We also passed the climate roadmap this year and it's going to be a great, it's gonna be, it's a generational bill and it will take many, many years to implement and will put us in a real leadership position in the country for net zero limits on greenhouse gases and a whole bevy of regulations and incentives that are gonna bring us closer to a green future. It's, it's a terrific bill. And now we're on to the FY22 budget. Hopefully, there won't be three of them like there were for FY21, but debate begins in earnest next week. We filed all our amendments, I have amendments for Maynard in and always fingers crossed, I never like to say before we get anything. But consensus revenue is about 3.5% above last year's numbers and House Ways and Means releases budget in response to the governor's. Really, an area that I think is important is our House budget is different than the governor's. The House will spend 22 million more in Chapter 70 funding than the governor had in. Also, we're gonna create a $40 million fund to help schools handle enrollment increases. And that's gonna be critical because enrollments are supposedly low. They are definitely going to increase. And the 40 million is a starting point. We're there to make that work for our schools. We're not gonna be walking away if that is not, is, that is not adequate numbers. And there's an, also an additional 15 million to fund summer school and mental health services to account for the pandemic's impact. I don't think we quite know what that impact has been. But we will find out this year and I think it's gonna be critically important that we're able to have the ability to invest in our students and invest in their wellbeing and invest in their future. Because, you know, they, they really were some of the real victims of, of this pandemic. We also include a $20 million rate increase for childcare providers. We've seen women have been sort of the, the, the folks that have, have borne the brunt in the largest numbers. And so much of it has to do with childcare and working around, you know, kids at home. And it's, it's been really, really tough and we realized that. And I think the American Rescue Plan and the infrastructure bill that's coming down from Congress is going to be extraordinary. There are gonna be a lot of one-time investments that happen. And I think as Jamie said, those one-time investments can reverberate for all of us for many years to come, for able to use them wisely. You've got 4.5, 4.5 billion coming to the state and you have 3.4 billion going directly to cities and towns. So it's gonna have an impact. And that doesn't include the trillion dollars coming in for infrastructure. But all of those are important. And what Chairman Michaelowitz has said is the impact across the state for those billion dollar investments is gonna be as high as 40 billion when you take into account direct aid to Massachusetts families, federal business loans and other investments in infrastructure, transit and schools. So there's going to be a lot of money coming to the state. And I know that all the towns in my district are ready to understand where it can go and how best to use it. And please be in touch if there's any, any issues. I know the speaker is, believes these funds will help us assist our state in recovery. And I think he also believes when you get people back to work on meaningful jobs, promising careers. And we've been doing a lot of talking to many, many groups that are dealing with workforce development to that. And we're cautiously optimistic that Massachusetts will find its way to restart the economy after federal aid this year. Current year revenues are coming in 1.5 billion higher than was expected. But again, with caution, we know these things are ups and downs always. But I think one of the, the most important things that I would say, aside from the dollars and cents that we're talking here, is that we really need to learn from the lessons of the pandemic. And I think it's an opportunity for all of us at all levels of government to get it right for the future and to, you know, commit to fixing what inequities were laid bare by, by this current pandemic and who fought the battles and who was the front line and who's now being, you know, cared for in, in, as we begin to see light at the end of the tunnel, whether it's healthcare, education, housing, jobs, so many other aspects of recovery. We need to have the hand of, hand of recovery on everything that we do in the coming days and months ahead. I do believe that. I'm gonna commit to it. And we're happy to take any questions that, that folks have.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you both. Thank you for taking the time. Thank you for being here. I have to say that I, you know, I, I'm fairly new to town government, not anymore. I've been here for three years now. However, growing up, I never, I never knew my state rep or my state senator. And it's still great to me how recognizable you both are in our town. And I think that speaks to how active you both are in our town. And we really appreciate that. We really appreciate you always keeping our little town in mind. But I will turn it over to, does anyone have any questions for either Senator or Representative Hogan?
I do. I am intrigued, Jamie and Kate, you both mentioned relative to, you know, availability of funds on infrastructure projects. And, you know, when I, when I first think infrastructure, of course, I see Justin right next to me on my screen. And I, and I think water and sewer for Maynard in particular, but I also think of other potential infrastructure issues that are ongoing, namely capital projects that, that might affect other portions of our, of our community. And so I'm hopeful that we can identify and will identify some projects, especially in the water sewer area, where we are in desperate need of some assistance as a small town. And I look forward to working with you both to, to getting some of those. I don't want to sound greedy, but, you know, I'm greedy. We need, we need to get some help as a small community. And that goes to the second point that I have relative to our need that becomes more and more evident every year on the education side. This arcs, we are victims of our size. And I, you know, as much as we talk about it, we can never come up with a solution as to how we can fund some of the issues that we come up against. And every year we get more and more, you know, feedback from the school department relative to the, you know, the special ed issues and, and everything else that seemed to affect Maynard in a higher, we, we get impacted higher than, than possibly other communities do, just purely again because of our size. And then my last point is, and I know Jamie and Kate, you'll both are, are, you know, advocates for affordable housing and other similar type of issues. We have seen in Maynard, not only the explosion of, of the sale of houses that are good for, good for all of us here in Maynard, but there's also a need for affordability. And I'm hopeful that we can find ways to, to develop more affordable housing for our community. And having worked now for several years on our Maynard Affordable Housing Trust, I see the impact that we've been able to have in just a short period of time. But we have a lot of opportunity there. So those are the three points that I'm, I'm hopeful that we can get some assistance from the state, as well as from this money that's coming in from the feds, which I think is gonna be significant to, to help us down the road. And one of the other infrastructure projects that I don't want to let go is, and I know our neighboring town, Acton, is working, at least there's a lot of talk about a community center. And for Maynard, we have a need for a place for our seniors that is more a larger area than what we've got now. I don't know what the ultimate answer is. It's just, it's a huge infrastructure issue in reality. It's, it's a huge capital project for us. It will take years of planning, but we've got to get started. And I think we're gonna need some help from the state level if there's any eligible funding for those types of projects. I think we're going to need that assistance. So those are my comments.
Thank you, David.
No questions? Were there any questions, Kate?
Well, that's, there are questions in all of those things. And, and the one thing I will point out, you'll notice that this year I didn't say, is there a way that we can get funding for a fire station? We had to.
You know, I also want to mention that I was on with Mast dot and they had mentioned the bridge over the Assabit downtown too. And I'm all ready to go. I'm sure Justin knows all about that. So.
So.
We agree with you, David. So.
So I'm sorry if there were no questions in there. I'm more, you know.
That's funny.
I more have a procedural question and I, you know, who knows? But so looking at the possible monies that are available for infrastructure coming down, you know, from federal and from, at the state level, how would we prepare ourselves to be in the best position to apply for these grants or opportunities or, or things like that? So what would this, what would be needed from us?
Guidelines are coming down on May 10th.
Excellent.
So I am sure that your town manager and DPW and everybody else is gonna be taking a look at that planning department. And then from there, it's gonna give you the guidelines of where and what the projects are. You have the projects there, right? You're looking at the guidelines to see what projects are going to be, you know, have the greatest possibility. And then, you know, I am sure that Jamie, I know myself, will be working with the Congresswoman and, you know, our partners at the State House to ensure that we see monies coming down from, you know, what we're able to receive through state government. But you too will be getting monies through, through the federal government as well, 3.5 or 3.6 billion dollars or whatever it was. So.
Okay.
Yeah. And I would just add that there, there is some, there are some possible grant opportunities in the American Rescue Plan. So I would say to the town administrator, if you haven't been in touch with probably Emily Byrne, the district director for Congresswoman Trahan, you know, encourage you to reach out to her to ask about any possible money in the American Rescue Plan, which obviously is law versus the infrastructure bill, which is still being considered in DC. So.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else from the board have any questions, comments?
I just wanted to ask and follow up a bit about, first of all, I agree with what, what David said, especially with regard to the special education, the circuit breaker that you mentioned, Senator Eldridge. But I wanted to expand a bit on, on what he said about affordable housing. And I think we're, we're moving closer and closer to meeting our 40B housing requirement. But it's the, the affordability of housing issue doesn't stop at Maynard's borders. So what, what kind of plans are there to address the statewide housing shortage? And then Kate, you talked about equity and I think that's, that's a big one right there because it's, it's a supply issue that's not just in Maynard, but it's the entire area and really the entire state. And then the second kind of affordability question I, I get from residents all the time is that the 80% of, that so much of our legislation is based upon is with every passing year, less and less acceptable as a threshold for what it means to be affordable housing. So is there any consideration or discussion on that particular point about incentivizing or providing funding for a community, a CPC or otherwise, to help start meeting more affordable housing or to, to find spaces throughout the state to increase the supply, to take some of the pressure off of communities like Maynard?
Yeah. Great, great questions, Jeff. Appreciate, you know, your support and, you know, David's work as well as, is all board members on affordable housing in, in Maynard. And I think that there seems to be a growing conclusion that just the, the typical, you know, chapter 40B housing where developer usually just builds the housing at 80% AMI, which you mentioned, you know, that that's, it's not really reaching our lower even moderate income, you know, residents. And so I don't know if Maynard's, forgive me for not knowing, if Maynard is considered becoming a housing choice community? Is that, has that happened or?
Yeah, it's already happened, hasn't it?
Is that, does Maynard already have that designation?
I see people nodding though.
Okay, okay. Okay. So that's been a, you know, the housing choice grants were just announced for, for specific projects. So, so like, you know, Acton got some, some funding as well as the town air in my district. So, you know, one of the conversations I've been having with Affordable Housing Trust and, and Select Board members and Planning Board members is perhaps doing a webinar with affordable housing experts about how a community actually builds truly affordable housing. So I can send you more information about that. One of the things I, I always bring up, and I know it's a challenge because Maynard's housing authority is, is pretty small, but, you know, is, is the Maynard Housing Authority considering, you know, actually building new public housing, you know, versus maintaining its current stock? I, I know that's challenging, but there, there are ways to put together financing to make that possible. And obviously CPA dollars can, can be used for affordable housing projects. But ultimately, it's about leveraging state and federal funds and engaging with, you know, nonprofit developers or other, other stakeholders that can help Maynard build truly affordable housing. So I'm happy to follow up with you about, about those things. So.
We've made some progress over the years, even just the recent five years or so with our inclusionary zoning bylaw that, that requires there to be, in certain sized developments, requires there to be affordable housing units added. We have a development that you've probably seen down off of 27, as you've had towards Sudbury on the left-hand side that has an affordable unit included in 10 housing units, which is exciting stuff because it will, although to Jeff's point, you know, when you look at the 80% rule, it's, you know, you're still looking at families that are, that are considered moderate income as opposed to lower income. To be able to afford it.
Yeah. And is that, if I may ask, is the town considered providing a deeper subsidy so that that's 60% AMI or lower or?
We have talked about it at the, at the trust, but there's just not enough money there for it. You know, because we have a brand new trust.
Okay. Yep. And that's where the state should step up. Yep. And that's where the state should step up.
But any partnerships, I mean, as you, as you work on these projects, if there is need for partnerships, we will be there and be able to ambassador and lobby and advocate for funding that you might need in any of the projects that you're looking at, will be looking at in the future. I know for Maynard, it is so tough because Maynard has a lot of housing in a very small geographic area. And when you think about how you would get more, how, you know, it's, it's, the solution is got to be more, but, but that's also a difficult ask for, for Maynard. I think it's, it is such a wonderful town and has to work so hard because it just doesn't have enough population sometimes, whether we're talking about the schools, or we're talking about how we're going to get people housed, how we, you know, maintain, you know, a, a mix of people in our community and it doesn't become unreachable for, for many, which is, which is, you know, would be such an unfortunate and horrible thing to happen for, for a town. So, you know, we're there. If you, if you are looking at projects, we're there to, to help and we're there to lobby for you.
And that's, that's a really good point that there is already a lot of housing that were more built out than, than other towns around, which is why I specifically asked about statewide incentives to, to take some of the supply pressures off for, for a town like us where we don't have quite as many options just because we're denser than most towns in the immediate area.
It's almost like you'd have to go up. And that's what's actually happened. So.
And then, then as Justin will tell you, we need the water to go up. So hopefully.
All connected.
It is.
All right. Anything else, Jeff?
No, thank you very much, both of you for coming to speak to us.
Absolutely. Delighted to be here. I know that there were some great funds that came in during the year that I think were helpful and, you know, from small business grants to, to funding grants to the schools. And, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that, that these partnerships will continue right on through the year as the hand of recovery sort of touches all of us and we're able to help our communities get through to the other side. And I think that Founder's Day was definitely a lifting of the spirit. It was so good to see you, all the selectmen there. It was just fabulous. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much. I just want to double check. Armand, are you all set? Do you have any questions?
No, no, I think everything was, I, I asked, I like David's asks. He's got some great, some great aspirations. I'm glad, I'm glad to hear.
Well, I, I was told, I was told by our representative that they were not asks.
But we, thank you both for all your, all your support and we look forward to working together with you as partners.
Yeah, we're there and we're there through this. I mean, we've been here through it and we'll continue to be there as we, as we work, walk towards the sunlight. Praise, praise be because, you know, I just, I just do see better days ahead. And all of this money will, will help us. And we just, the wise investments will pay off, you know, down the road and down the road. So. And thank you, David. I want to thank you specifically. Your insights always appreciated and you know it.
All right. With that, I will say thank you to both of you again. And again, thank you for always keeping us in mind and thank you for being great partners. And we look forward to working with you again soon.
Thank you, Justine. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good night. All right. I will move to, now we're going to go back. So it's going to be the acceptance of minutes, which is item number four. And I will entertain a motion for the April 6th minutes.
All right. I'll take a stab at it.
Excellent.
Move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of April 6th, 2021, as shown. Authorizing use of digital signature approved.
Do I have a second? Oh, David, David's seconded have muted. Nope.
Second.
All right. Any, any conversation regarding these minutes? Okay. Then all in favor, Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you. Next, we will go on to correspondences. There are, it looks like A through L. I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept and approve correspondence as A through L shown.
I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. And there's a lot on here. I'm wondering if anyone has any comments about any of the correspondences?
Yeah, I like to have a little discussion if possible in regards to A. So Deb Rosell submitted this proposal. That was something that was, well, we had a meeting a while back and that came out of that meeting, the proposals. And I think that's something that I hope everybody took a look at. And to see some of the discussions and options that they were looking as a possible solution for the senior center. And I know that David brought up something very important to the state rep and to Senator. It's important that we keep that in our, in our focus as we move forward because 30% of our population right now are seniors and I think we should keep that in mind. And they deserve to have a better facility than what, what they have right now. So and I know that Greg and Amy are, are looking at the, one of the possible options at Mill and Main. So that's something that we should definitely keep our, you know, options open all the time. But the proposal that came from Deb was kind of interesting and there were certain aspects that we should think about looking at and seeing whether or not those are viable options and whether or not there's something that we should pursue. But I just think in general, we need to keep that in mind and we should definitely think about having a plan in place and how we're going to get there.
I agree. I think that, I think that it's one of those, so I, I had it put on the correspondences so we could accept it. And then I think what we can do is at another meeting, we can invite, I actually do see Amy on the call tonight. But we can invite Amy being the COA Director here, you know, and members of, I believe the COA Board. And then Greg and have, have everyone on the same call to, to really discuss it. So I kind of wanted to just float this out now and then put them on for another agenda later. If that would work for everybody. Great. No, she definitely did a lot of work, has a lot of different ideas for that. Does anyone else have any, does anyone have any other questions about other correspondences?
Not specifically to the correspondence that came in, other than Verizon is included. A comment was made to me, somebody saw that Verizon was on, had submitted a correspondence to us and commented to me that they wanted to say that over at, this is a business person over at Parker Street Project, 129 or the shops or whatever, that the, the cellular reception in that area is not good. And I told them that, no, they were, they were coming to talk to us about their contract for, for cable television. But that perhaps when their representative is there, somebody can mention about the fact that Verizon reception over at the Maynard Crossing sites for businesses apparently is, leaves something to be desired. I haven't made a phone call from over there, so I haven't had to notice it, but I do listen to the radio, to the radio on my phone and it does pop out sometimes, but I don't know if that's related or not. But something just to mention to them, I know we, we've got, we've got a tower in town. So it might just be a dead spot.
All right. Anyone else? I have one question and I'm going to put Justin on the spot. Hi there. Just a quick question regarding, it's actually regarding the public hearing for Sudbury, the planning board regarding the development of Fox Hill Drive. Do you know where that, do you happen to know where that is? And the reason I'm asking is just because I know the issues that we have run into with our, with our water treatment plant over on Old Marlborough Road after the development that was built on the edge of town there. I'm just curious whether or not this is an area that might be affected. I just haven't had a chance to look it up.
Actually, this is the first time I'm seeing this as well. There might have been running email. I might've missed it. I'll, I'll double check and get back to you if there's any concerns.
I'll do a quick, I'll do a quick search on the location of Fox Hill, but I'm, I'm pretty sure that's in the neighborhood with the Lions that are, you know, as you go right past the, the turf field. I, I'm pretty sure that's Fox Hill Road up in that area, which is close to what you're talking about.
So that's the thing is so far, I, I tried Google mapping it or Google Maps and it came up Fox Hills, something else. So I wasn't sure if it was the same and I didn't have a chance to look up the assessor's map. So sorry, Justin, didn't mean to put you on the spot without, without, you know, any answer, but, but again, that would just be my only, my only comment about that is, you know, obvious, I'm not sure if there's anything we can ever do about that, but just to point out the fact that, that development does have consequences and sometimes we don't realize it until years later.
Yeah, we can bring it to their attention, at least for consideration.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Okay. Then all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you. Moving ahead to the cemetery consent agenda. Cemetery deed, I will entertain a motion.
We'll move to approve the consent agenda item as presented and authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Armand. And any discussion regarding deed 2073 and 2076? All right. All in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes. All right. We've already heard from Senator Eldridge and Representative Hogan. So moving on to item eight, use of town property for the duck race. And I will entertain a motion on this.
Move to approve the special permit for the duck race fundraiser of the Cescon Tenial Steering Committee for June 5th and 6th, 2021, contingent upon attendance. I'm sorry, adherence with all the federal, state and local public health and safety guidance. Authorizing use of digital signature approved.
Thank you, Jeff. All right. Hi Greg, would you like to speak to this?
So this is, as a reminder, Jen Pecorelli with the Cescon Continuum, Ceswas. I had it one, at one time I could say, the 150th Anniversary Steering Committee. So Jen's been advocating for this for a couple of months now to get this duck race as a fundraiser and she did the legwork. She went to the individual town staffs. And I just said, if you can sell them, you sold me and then, and then I'll, I'll, I'll hand it over to the board. So the board had allowed for her to apply and this is her application. So Jen, do you have anything else to add?
Nope. I think we've, we've got it all. Becky had asked me a couple of questions about like logistics and stuff, but I told her, I says, I really hadn't gone that far. I was waiting to get the approval. And then I can send you all the, the rest of the information that you guys need, like how many ducks and all that information. She'd even asked like how much we were going to charge per duck, but I told her, I said, I hadn't gotten that far yet because I didn't want to order them until I had the, the green light. Otherwise you'd see me selling them on my Maynard yard sale at a reduced rate. So, um, yeah, I just wanted to wait until I knew I had the green light to go and then I'll get you all the rest of the information.
Great. All right. Anyone have any questions for Jen? All right. I mean, we've, we've heard, you've, you've spoken a few times on this and so, I think the third time. So, so without hearing any questions or concerns, all in favor, Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So congratulations on your duck race. You finally got it.
Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you. Wait till I email you next month with my next idea.
At least you know to start in advance though. So see it works.
That's right.
When will you start, when will you start selling ducks?
Um, well, so some, I'll get, I'm going to start getting all my prices now. One of our fabulous Maynard businesses after my first meeting with you guys, I think it was offered to give us 150 ducks. This, which is great. So I'm going to touch base with them again. They have access to, I'll release their information once we get everything ready, but I will speak with them tomorrow in that, because I think they have access to like a surplus store. And once I talk to them and get them, then we can set the prices and I'll, you guys want me to tell you all about the advertising and everything? You want me to let you know anything? Okay. All right. So if you guys have any questions or concerns, you guys can email me this time.
Excellent. All right. That sounds great. Thank you. And I'm sure that's the thing is I'm sure that we will see it. We will see it advertised and, and things like that. So.
Yeah, I just have to get it together. I mean, I, I can get things together fairly quickly. So I figure in the next month I will have all of the information ready and ready to go.
Great.
Good luck. Good luck.
Congratulations, Jen. Thank you.
Madam Chair, before we move on, Fox Hill Road in Sudbury. It's, as you go down Wallfam Street, past the solar array.
Yep.
And then you get to St. John's Church is on the right. There's that roadway that heads in on the left before you get to the intersection. Then you go up that hill and there's another road that goes off of it that's Fox Hill Run. So.
That's the thing though. This is Fox Hill Drive. So that's my question.
This is Fox Hill Road. Yeah, okay.
So I'm not sure if it's the same, if it's an extension. But yes, so, so it'll be interesting to see what, where that actually ended up being.
Cause that does a butt Maynard. Fox Hill Road, a butts Maynard right at the, like above the solar array and then the backside would be down towards the back end of the, the Rod and Gun.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you, David. Thank you. All right. Let us, let's move on to item nine, which is a street closure request for the Relay for Life. I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve, approve the closures of the following streets and others as needed in support of the Relay for Life event on Friday, June 4th, 2021, contingent upon adherence to all federal, state and local public health and safety guidance. Great Road, Sudbury Street, Main Street, Nathan Street, Summer Street. Authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Armand. All right. Greg, would you like to introduce or would you like me to go right to Kim Lally?
You can just go right to Kim. That's all I was going to do. Just, yeah, go ahead.
All right. Hi, Kim.
Hello.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. So why don't you tell us a little bit about your plan for June 4th?
Well, we've, as everything has been canceled for COVID, the Relay for Life has also been canceled for the actual event that we have. So we were hoping to have the motorcade go through town and start and end at the Boys and Girls Club. And it's, it's, no one will be out of cars. It will all be, will all be inside the cars going around and it's going to be to, hopefully to honor survivors and do a little bit of a kind of a kickoff for our relay and just hopefully we can get the word out to people that we're still here, we still care about our survivors and that we're honoring people that have passed from cancer as well. And that's our, that's our goal for that.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Could it be compared, Kim, to the, like the graduation parade from last year, that type of a thing where?
Yeah.
Yeah. People like that are survivors, perhaps sitting on the back of a, of an open vehicle waving at people as they go through.
Yeah. Yes. I can imagine it probably won't be, I feel like the, the seniors was a long, very, very.
Be that long.
No. I'm, I'm guessing, I mean, I have, we haven't put it out there because we're waiting for approval as well. But I'm, I'm thinking 15 cars. I don't know. I can give you a better idea when we actually put it out there.
Okay.
Obviously we're hoping it's more than that, but it still will be, still will be quick. It's not going to be the same kind of thing as the teenagers.
Okay. Does anyone else have, does anyone have any questions for Kim?
This is, I have a question, Madam Chair. Kim, this is, I have a question, Madam Chair. Did, um, have you and I apologize if you've already been over this. Do you have a contact right now with the police department? Cause that's obviously who you should be coordinating for this event. So you know, like, as you just said, you don't have all the details yet, but as you develop it and then you keep, keep in touch with them, they'll obviously wanna be able to help you.
Yeah, they, they just commented on this email for this, um, for this meeting and um his first name, Noble.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
He said that, he said it was fine. It was, they were okay with it, but other than that, I haven't, no, I haven't yet um finalized anything with them.
You can shoot him an email. Send, send chief an email and then he'll, and he'll send it to whoever.
Okay.
His first name's Chief.
No, it's okay.
No, that's great. Cause that was actually, that was gonna be my question also is just typically when we see these, we, we do see the chief's approval in there that he has no issues or, or whatever. So we just hadn't seen that yet. But I feel like I had heard that he knew about this, so.
Yeah.
So that's.
And in the fire department, both said it was, they saw no problems.
Yeah.
Right. All right. Uh, anyone else have any questions or comments? All right, then all in favor, Armand?
Uh, yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes. So Kim, if you could just make sure again that you do reach out to uh Chief Noble, to Sowers, make sure that they get in touch with Greg, I almost said Chief Johnson, that didn't work.
That was good.
Almost flowed. If you could just uh, make sure that, so we're all in the loop, but uh, hopefully we'll have a very, you'll have a very successful event uh, on the fourth.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. All right, next we are going to do uh, use of town property for Maynard Cleanup Day. And I will entertain a motion.
Okay, um, move to authorize the town administrator to approve the use of town properties for the Maynard Cleanup Day or Days tentatively scheduled on May the second, twenty twenty one and any other dates as requested contingent upon adherence to all the federal, state and local public health and safety guide, authorize the use of digital signatures if approved.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, Greg?
So when I um, I'll just, I'm taking notes at the same, I'm taking minutes notes at the same time. So um, when I had the agenda posted last week when we uh, I wasn't entirely sure of the date yet. But since then, I believe on Friday or even over the weekend, I think, I think some more things were solidified. So I think I would turn to Laura Moyn, Moina, I, I'm probably saying your last name wrong, I apologize. Um, and then she can verify the, some of the details. I see you Laura, so introduce yourself, please. Tell us, tell us what's happening.
Okay, you actually said my name correctly.
It's recorded.
No one ever gets it right the first time. I didn't get it right the first time. Um, so I'm here actually with Mike from the Maynard Family Network. And so because we're from two different groups, it is a collaboration, this cleanup, and I think the Green Maynard portion is hoping to do their event on May second. And that's what's in the paperwork, but Michael had actually previously like started the planning before we did for his group and then Justin connected us. So um, he can share a little bit about what the Maynard Family Network is doing, but in terms of Green Maynard, that's the group I'm with. Um, we wanted to do something to celebrate Earth Day, to celebrate Maynard, to help the businesses downtown somehow. So basically just um, the, you know, the litter league had been doing this for several years and um, I'm in touch with Carol Leary, who's been really supportive and offered for us to collaborate this year and then um, hopefully in the future with Green Maynard and the Maynard Family Network and any other groups that wanna collaborate a little more. You know, ahead of time, but I think because it's the first year I'll collaborating or just, you know, doing the best we can, but it's actually um, with this with Becky and Justin, I think it'll, it'll be a good event, so.
Great, all right. Hi, Michael.
Hi all, um, thanks Laura and thanks all. Um, just a little background, so um so I'm here representing the Maynard Family Network. Uh, so about a month ago, a few weeks ago, we had uh, just with a few members of our group had um, wanted to kind of come together to do a trash cleanup, a private event. Um, families were gonna do them on their own time. Um, it wasn't gonna be organized in town or really advertised. Uh, and so I reached out to Justin just to see if we could use the dumpster. I mean, I'm anticipating originally was anticipating for us like eight to ten bags. Um, and Justin got back to us. I, I appreciate the quick response and the enthusiastic response. And then he um, had mentioned Laura and Green Maynard, um, trying to do the event that Laura just described, uh, which is um a more kind of proactive public event. And so we're fully in support of that. Um, we had already kind of just agreed on dates for ours, uh, which were gonna be this week. There's no real one date because just some families are gonna do on their own time. So I had agreed that I would collect our trash and then when Laura um, again, probably eight to ten bags, then when Laura proposed her event. I told her I'd be willing to uh, just hold on to what we have and then um, add ours to whatever Green Maynard could was collecting on their event date on, on Sunday, May second and so that we could just collectively um, show kind of a will be collective impact um, in kind of a unified front. And we are in full support of working with them uh, single event next year, but, but that's a little background from my.
Great, all right, thank you. Um, I did see, I did see some of the emails that went back and forth and uh, and I appreciate Justin kind of reaching out and putting you both in touch with each other and trying to collaborate altogether. Um, I think it's, I think it's a great idea. Does anyone have any questions for uh, either Laura or Michael or Justin? All right. I mean, you're offering to clean up the town. I just really, really trying to say no there.
Will you, um, if this is tongue in cheek, please, please understand, but will you be using four dollar stickers?
David, I get to do that.
No, no.
He's providing a dumpster. What are you talking about?
Yeah, you know what he, he's doing is, you know, they're providing a service that our workers can't get to, so.
I, I understand. It was totally, totally just tongue in cheek.
And I'll, I'll come down and slap a four dollar sticker on the dumpster myself.
You took the words out of my mouth. I was just gonna recommend it.
All right, so uh, all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so thank you.
Thank you for your work and volunteering.
Thank you, thank you all.
Have fun.
All right, on to item number eleven, the proposed solar array project. So there's no, there's no motion for this. Uh, it's more of a providing direction. Uh, we've, we've had a lot of information over the last few weeks. Uh, we got some uh, questions and requested documentation from the school committee. We have a plethora of information that was provided by uh, town staff, so I think Greg, would you like to say anything to start us off?
I can give some context. So, so it's similar to what the board had been asked earlier. The question still remains, would the board like to prefer that the town negotiate with the vendor named Sunpower? In consultation with Beacon Integrated or Beacon Integrated, well, Beth Greenblatt is the, is the name of the consultant. And so um, we've all been engaged uh, and the standard model is a pilot agreement. So that's a payment in lieu of taxes um, to realize a portion of the revenue that would be coming from this project. Again, it would be uh, solar panels to be installed um, on school grounds, some on roofs, some over car parks and, and uh, another location identified uh, at the South Field behind Green Meadow Elementary School. So there's one of the forms of revenue could be come through pilot agreement. Now, it may, it became more complicated because the um, clean I wanna, I might get the name wrong. The Clean Air Act, I believe, was, was the name of the, of the law, um, was approved and in anticipation of that becoming enforced, uh, we would like direction as to whether continuing negotiations or really to start negotiations um, formally with Sunpower to have a pilot agreement enacted. Um, and we would like to have that done before uh, the Clean Airs Act is enforced. Otherwise, it wouldn't be considered a new growth uh, to the tax base. So that, that's not necessarily a deal breaker for the whole project as it is, but it is uh, preferred and advised, recommended to the board and the town to have that, the, the value of those assets uh, realized as tax growth um, to the, to the, to the community. However, um, the school committee has not voted to authorize the to authorize the project. So there was, there was multiple, there was two votes that were taken um, at uh annual town meeting in June. Um, there was an assumption that the school committee had previously authorized those, but they had not. And so we're, we are asking, um, I'm asking for the board's direction, so that the um oh, and then more context, I'm just kinda going over this in my head. So the more context is that um, the school committee um, in considering uh, authorizing or approving endorsing this project has questions and they provided uh, documents to, as a collection of those questions. One is a list of questions. The other one is, is a list of documents they would like. Um, they range from oh, it's a large range. One of, one of the major uh, points is um, verifying ownership of the field. Um, which is, which is important to, to determine who has um the, the true authorization to allow for the use of the field um, for this purposes. So Justin DiMarco has done a significant amount of research, uh, which we provided in board docs. Um, I've summarized what, what you've, what I, I kinda what I just said into a memo, um, provided to the board as well. And for the public consumption, all of this is public consumption. So that, I, that's, that's, that's a lot. That's like multiple, multiple hours of into condensed, but um, the work, you know, if we're going to continue this which, which means having Justin and our consultant continue to be engaged, which for Justin, he's salary, so it's, so it's not necessarily additional cost, although it's it's an opportunity cost because we're defending, we're, we're spending so much time on this. And a lot of time has been spent, so there, we've already, we don't, we went through the whole RFP process. We engaged with Sunpower and the other vendor for a certain amount of time. So uh, um, select board member Gavin was a member of that. So we, we've, we've already spent a lot of time on this. And if we're continuing to do this, I think it could be valuable, but um, with a certain with an uncertainty that the school committee has not yet voted and we don't know how they will vote. I'm looking for a direction of the board as to how to use the resources, meaning myself, Justin, Beth.
And you'll also have to engage uh, town council with the negotiation, correct?
Certainly. Now, they already have and they, and um, our, our firm, uh, which is uh, me, Tyler McCosta, has already worked with Beth Greenblatt um, in the past, so that, so and, and this model that, that's being presented, uh, that's being considered um, with Sunpower is it's, it's not, it's not so atypical, like it's, it's, we're, we're familiar with it. It's a standard to a degree. I mean, there's not a lot of large solar projects, um, and specifically on, on town properties. Now, uh Sunpower has already applied uh, to the state to get eligibility for block five of the SMART program, which it kind of alludes to incentives and whatnot. So we, so they're, they're on board. They've invested um, not only through the proposal itself, but over months of meetings with our team.
Okay. All right. Go ahead.
Just on that last point, do we know, one question that remains from last time we talked about this, how close we are to leaving block five?
To leaving block five?
Right, cause the incentive structure drops off if, if we leave block five.
Oh, good question. Uh, I asked similar to that to Justin today, actually. So Justin, what, what's your, what's your takeaway?
Yeah, it's, it's um, an escalating and declining block based off of projects that apply to the system. So anything from, I, I gave Greg an example today of, let's say Capital Group wants to put solar on every single one of their buildings down at Maynard Crossing. Well, they can engage in um, an RFP or they can just go right out to any, any solar company and uh, execute a proposal that includes, you know, whatever the, the kilowatts produced is. And that solar company would apply immediately to get into the tariff. Now, depending on what there is room for, room left for expansion in the tariff dictates where they're gonna fall. But we don't know because there is the, there is always the assumption that when you get, when you apply for tariff five and you don't execute and fall out, then there can be someone to backfill. But if everybody applies and then it declines to block four and all those projects go to fruition, then we're kinda stuck, you know, kinda chasing our tails. So there is an unknown assumption. Beth has, um, I think we talked about this last time. She has access to EverSource's grid network that describes the application processes and, and what she calls a heat map. Um, right now, our applications are on the heat map, so they're counted for in block five. But there's also a lot, a lot of other projects that are in the heat map that have not come to fruition. So those might actually, you know, happen. They might come off. It's a, it's a gamble. But we know that block five is one of the highest tariff blocks left in the Commonwealth. A lot of the regions are down to block three, block two of the SMART program. Um, Maynard's area, our region right now with block five is highly sought after, excuse me, highly sought after. Um, we've actually been approached um, in a different conversation with our current landfill project to reopen our contract because they might wanna actually approach um, getting into the SMART program and, and block five. So there's a lot of action in our region. So it's a, it would benefit us to continue to move at pace to make sure maximum economic revenue.
Is, is there any kind of indication about what the timeline of that risk is, right? If we delay a month, can we still have a reasonable certainty we're in block five? But if we delay, say, six months, then we've, you know, are reasonably certain we'll fall out of block five? Or is it just too uncertain to make that kind of an assessment?
It's hard to make the judgment call. The conversations I've had a lot with Beth are currently right now, Sunpower has received confirmation that we have four accepted applications into our SMART program. And the reason is it's not Maynard, we didn't, Sunpower didn't apply as one. There's criteria within uh, within the SMART program. Is, there's actually four applications for the proposal for Maynard, for the SMART program. Three of them have been accepted and one is still up for discussion in regards to Sunpower and um, EverSource and DOER. So we have that secured. The problem is if our vendor then doesn't find the proposal economically viable, they will remove their application and we don't know what happens in that process. Others may jump onto that, then declining block four. So there's not an accurate means. Beth just kinda gave me her experience with this and based off of what's happening in the Commonwealth. And the loosening of criteria with the recent governor's bill allows for developers to really uh, kinda try to hammer home solar projects.
Do these blocks, Justin, reset or uh, like is there, is there like an annual reset or is it a uh, is it just based on one bulk set of money or one bulk set of opportunity?
So I think Beth kinda talked about this a little bit. When, when solar originally came out, the incentive program was named something else. I don't remember off the top of my head. And then after ten, fifteen years, they, DOER introduced what's called the SMART program, which is what we are currently under and actually still has a meaningful amount of time and that's the de-escalating tariff system. What it is, is again, I try to make it simple, is it's supply and demand. You know, we only have so much need for power and as green infrastructure fills that until the demand increases, you're not necessarily gonna backfill it. The idea behind the SMART de-escalating process was to try to do a market correction and, and flip our energy needs to solar or green energy such as windmills, et cetera. That is actually drastically increased and that is causing the de-escalation. So eventually the idea is that incentives will not be needed for what will be capitalism and the, the, the competition factor for green energy. So there is not a clear gauge. Uh, Beth has described, you know, amongst her colleagues and a lot of industry experts that when the SMART program de-escalating tariff ends, there may not be another one because the market has already adjusted itself. They're trying to unsubsidize clean energy. The goal is to not have the government have to force clean energy on to society to eventually make that the standard, which then has capitalism take over.
So does this, um, I don't, I don't wanna use the term in a negative way, but does this urgency to get our um I don't I don't want to use the term in a negative way, but does this urgency to get ourselves into the higher level now supersede the urgency that we had at our last discussion, which was the governor's signature, which I think based on documentation that we saw over the last week or so was sort of that urgency was sort of eased because I understand that the uh the time limit that we thought we had sort of expanded out to rather than ninety days, the ninety days might be later or something that maybe I I was misinterpreting what I was reading, but I sensed that that the urgency that we had on the governor's signature of the Clean Air or Clean Bill Act, Clean Whatever Act um had extended out. Am I misinterpreting that?
No, they're both kind of important. They're parallel and some are a little more important than others. So if the select board wants to look at new growth, um as Greg alluded to within the pilot program, then we need to execute a pilot now with but prior to June twenty sixth. Um and that's in the current allowance. The new bill does not allow for communities to capture new growth. So that is important from an option standpoint of revenue. And as you, uh uh as some of you may know, new growth ki- uh you know, allows for our levy to go up, but also can be offset to offset tax rates. So if you leave that levy growth on the table, you can potentially offset or decline your tax rate. That's something that you guys would have the ability to if you capture it now. If we do not capture that within a pilot agreement now, we lose that ability. But that does not mean we can't have a pilot agreement. It just means we lose the ability to capture new growth. That is pretty important if you look at this. Um and then block five is more of the economics. So right now, we're in that seventy thousand dollar range at the original proposal. The block five tariff decline adjusts those economic impacts. So I think we presented a three-block tier system in our P process. David, remember the the price proposal? I think we've also included that in board docs. And there was a significant reduction from block five to block four on the proposal. I want to say it was almost thirty forty grand.
Yep.
And then if we talk about potential, what the concept proposal is in reducing that, we're really talking about scales of economy at that point not being worth the project. So kind of to go back to Jeff's point is once we're locked into the SMART program, we have time. The 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 issue that we have is keeping the developer active and investing without certain known commodities or or known circumstances moving forward. And that's kind of the 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 area of concern moving forward.
So a quick question about the negotiating the pilot. Uh you know, when we sit there and say that we have, you know, ninety days or or whatever, we have that that deadline of June twenty sixth. It also just occurred to me, obviously, that it takes time on both sides to negotiate. So that's something that that has to be, and I reread the memo, which says that that has to be fully executed by June twenty sixth, which means a lot of work has to go in the next month or so, yeah, right, um in order to get that done.
Yep.
That's just something I just wanted to point out.
Yeah, and I, you know, to to Greg's ultimate point, oh, Justin, if you have something to add to that comment, go ahead and do that.
Thanks, Dave. I just wanted to add, so it's not just the negotiation. So we actually have to assess the infrastructure. So our assessor's office has to actually conduct an assessment of the conceptual designs to place a value for that new growth. So that takes time. So that's also in parallel to the negotiation process.
Okay, thank you.
Uh what what I was gonna get at is um we had a lengthy discussion. Um Jeff was in on it at the budget subcommittee um the other day about moving forward and what are uh from a budget perspective, we sort of got off track and I thank Jeff for bringing it back on track that evening. But um anyway, my feeling on this remains the same as it was as it was in that I certainly am a huge advocate for um for green energy and um I certainly love solar projects when they are uh available and economical for everybody. Uh what I don't want is to have Greg and his team spend hours and hours of work than to learn that um our partners at the school side are not even interested in moving forward with the project. Um and so that's where the 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 difficulty comes in. Because I'm I'm not at all going to advocate to approve something if the schools don't want it on their on their buildings or in their parking lots or wherever. I'm also very concerned about uh what Justin just mentioned, and it's included in the documents that we got for this evening. Um and it was discussed at length when we were having the um the meetings with both vendors that were the finalists. The reduction in size of the prop of the ground-based um arrays behind that are currently situated behind Green Meadow in the plan um would reduce the uh the economics for the uh for Sun Power to an extent that my sense that when we were talking with them and Justin and or Greg, who were both in on the meetings, um agree with me or disagree with me. But basically, the point I heard at those meetings was without the ground-based at the size that they had agreed to, it would made no economic sense for them to move forward. Um so, you know, I I've seen some requests, can we reduce the size of the ground-based behind Green Meadow? My sense is from the discussions that we were involved in that that wouldn't work economically for Sun Power. So therefore, we don't move forward because they wouldn't advocate to move forward because it wouldn't make sense for them as a business. So I guess what I'm saying in a long-winded way is that uh we need to know uh if our staff time is worth it. Because we don't want to be spending staff time and money and effort to spin wheels and not have an outcome from that that will result in the be our partners saying, no, we don't want it. Then we've wasted our time and I don't want to waste anybody's time.
No, I I actually completely agree with you, David, and I think that um there have been, there were a lot of questions that the school committee raised. There are a lot of documents that they requested. Um I think that there has been a lot of conversation that's happened regarding the project. Um and I am I am satisfied. And I guess the question I have with my board is if the school committee were to move forward, is does do my does does our board have any questions or concerns? You know, if the school committee tomorrow said, yes, we want this, would our would our committee be good, would with our board be good with moving forward with negotiating a pilot, entering into the agreement, et cetera? Because I think that's ultimately what we're trying to get to. So I just want to make sure before we even throw it back to the school committee, is this something that we are in favor of?
Yeah, I'm totally on board if if it goes with the school. I think there are some other issues that Jeff raised that he's probably wants, he's chomping at the bit, I think, right now to raise them as as it is.
I did not know that, so I will.
No, I I was wondering if you were gonna raise the same questions that you did at the budget subcommittee relative to some of the demands that were made and the questions that were asked.
Well, we we can get into that, but I don't think that quite relates to Justine's question, which is which is my thoughts. And so let me let me answer that first. And then, David, if you want to talk about that, because I think that's part of the direction Greg is asking for. So um I I do want to you know, acknowledge saying that I'm not sure has become explicit in in either our conversations, the school committee, that that many of the residents uh who have reached out to me, uh you know, have an attachment to the field that just goes beyond its current use and kind of, you know, I I think there's an attempt to almost treat all open spaces equal and we're finding out that that it, you know, clearly not all open spaces equal. And so I just think we need to acknowledge that there there's no good way to capture that, you know, attachment to this open space that can be compared to a monetary value and educational value, a carbon offset, a number of trees. So I I think I think a lot of the conversations are sort of based around that, but nobody's touched it explicitly. Um and so I think if we if we do go forward to this project, it's very important to recognize that there are pros, there are cons, that there are trade-offs and that that attachment to the open space is is significant. Um and that we should deliberately acknowledge it if we go forward. But the answer to your question is I I am uh in favor of the proposal as as I see it right now, and I've talked to Justin a number of times. Um and so I guess then the next question, um given Armin and David's response is what direction we provide to to Greg and Justin uh in terms of this this list of uh documents and questions from the school committee.
So I think that personally, um I like I said, I am, I realize the school committee has a lot of questions. Um and I think that what I will probably do is um actually, it wasn't that the they were sent to Greg directly. So I think that I would direct Greg to with with our board um to basically send back the responses of the the information that we have already gathered, the the information that they already have. Um and that that's the information that we have to move forward. And and unfortunately, I realize they want more information, but um they're more than welcome to research it themselves if they would like, but we also need to put a date on as to what when we would get that information by. Because I I think that we would really need to know by probably our, you know, really drop dead date would probably by our next uh by our May fourth meeting. I mean, I know we keep saying, we keep putting off this, you know, it was it was you know, a month ago almost. And and we've been saying this for a month and even pushing it out to May fourth will be tough, May fourth or May fifth, depending on when we when we have the meeting. Um will be tough because again, it doesn't leave a lot of time for the assessing and the negotiating and the amount of work that town staff will have to do to get this done. But I haven't seen it on any school committee agendas, so I I am trying to give them a little bit of time to um to discuss it and digest it and and come back with their recommendation.
So that's that's kind of why I'm hitting at this question about block five. And if we decide to say gain time by not entering the pilot and capturing this new growth, do we put the overall economics of the project at risk? And so I'm still, I still feel like, you know, if we if we wanted to give the school committee time by foregoing the new growth, you know, are we just walking closer closer to a fiscal cliff where we drop from seventy to forty thousand dollars that we don't know exactly what time that we take that step over and now we've all of a sudden lost out on thirty thousand dollars per year, which which in my mind makes the project a whole lot less feasible than the new growth question.
Right. And you've also then, you've, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, the other thing is that that by doing that, by putting it off for, you know, three, four, five, six months, first of all, you're engaging with a contractor that you may not end up engaging with, which doesn't it it's not a great business practice. I know it happens, but it's not a great business practice. And however many hours we're going to be expecting, um you know, I mean, there's been well over a hundred plus hours of town staff time put into this already. Um so wh- where's that? And and I know that town staff could be doing a whole lot of other things. So you know, where is that tipping point of making it worth it to put it off? Even though, you you what where is that? As Greg likes to say, where is that juice worth the squeeze?
That's that's what I'm having trouble with. If the, you know, if if the current amount of information isn't sufficient for the school committee, but a month that would pass by the new growth deadline, but still allow us to capture the full seventy thousand dollars would be enough to give the school committee the information they need to get to yes on this question. That's what I'm trying to balance out right there.
Well, I think according to the document, it says, um the document, not the questions, it says that the school committee requires the following documents for review before it can vote on the motion uh presented to it by the town administrator. Uh and then then numbers one through six and eighteen need to be reviewed and vetted by district's legal counsel. Um some of the requirements that they want is uh statements from committees that meet monthly or every other, you know, or or whatever. So so I don't, we wouldn't even have this information in a month. Um and that's kind of, I I think that in itself with the documentation that was provided, to be honest, is is pretty telling. Um there's there's no that, there is no way we could have, we could provide this. If we had known that there were these concerns back in November, um you know, we could have started some of this if it was even decided that it's necessary. But um but I feel like the town staff has done their due diligence. Um and we are, we're trying to move this forward. And it is again, a school committee project. If school committee does not want it, if the schools do not want it and they're not comfortable with it, that is absolutely fine. Um we just need an answer as well.
So basically, go ahead.
Go ahead, Armin.
No, I'm saying, so basically what you're saying, Justine, is that um if if we don't have an answer by May fourth, then this is a move point.
Well, that's that's my opinion, but we're bored. So I have, I I'm willing to, I'm willing to entertain other things, but this is just, the these are just I'm just telling you what I've been thinking over the past, you know, two weeks since we we've last talked about.
We're all, we're all agreeing that if they don't want this, then this project, then it's not, we're not gonna, you know, go ahead with it. So so we need to have an answer from them. I guess by our next meeting, basically what you're asking for.
And Jeff, Jeff, you don't look a hundred percent comfortable with that.
I'm worried if we we push for that for the school committee to get us an answer before um the next meeting, for that we growth pilot, we push them into saying no when maybe an extra month where we still capture the seventy thousand dollars. We can, I I don't think we, I I think the 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 total list is is a bit long, but we can make a lot of progress into putting in a good faith effort to get some of those committees, maybe not every single one. And I don't I don't think we need a yes out of every single of those. I don't think it's wise for either ourselves or the school committee to to as that is worded here in front of me, to make their vote contingent upon a yes from all all nine of these committees, but
Actually, what it says.
If if it, I mean, if if they're actually going to make their vote contingent upon the vote of, you know, nine different committees, there that's that's just sticking up, you know, kind of bureaucracy in in the way. So I I think we can make a good faith effort to go and get opinions from some of those if we if we deliberately chose to do so. And and, you know, it the tree committee, for instance, I think that's you can't make a contingent because that's going to be a committee with such a narrow scope, but it's not really designed to step back and look at a bigger, you know, valuing trees against the the huge, you know, um carbon offsets. Um so I I I I don't think it would be wise to make our decision contingent upon just the decision of the tree committee and and eight other committees, but we may be able to you know, make a better good faith effort towards getting some information from the town if we were able to get, say, an opinion from the finance committee saying that we know of no other, you know, um proposed project for this at this time and from the tree committee to say, you know, we don't approve the loss of trees, but we're not designed to offset it. And so I I think we could consider taking the time to make the good faith effort and putting that broader packet of information into the school committee's hands to say that we have done all we can within reason to provide you with the information that you're asking for.
So what's the, what is, do you think is um
and
reason? What what is, what would your definition of within reason be?
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out. We uh it's 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 got to be a timeline, right? Because we we can't risk keep walking over to that cliff until we fall off. But if it takes an extra few weeks and we miss the pilot, but still are within that seventy thousand um dollar range before we fall off the cliff to the forty thousand dollars, you know, so like a month could be within reason there. And that's why I'm kind of seeing how close we are to that cliff. So six months is not within reason because I feel that that would incur too big of a risk of, you know, the developer pulling out and us not being able to gain the full monetary benefits if the project does go forward. So if we had any more clarity there, but without that clarity, I'd still say it's it's probably around the timeframe of a month to get some of these committees the time to put that on their agenda and come up with a response and for us to to craft answers. Or or if we and we lose the pilot by doing that. So if we think the pilot is a hugely valuable portion of this, then then we just have to say, you know, here's here's our response, give our best response possible to each of these. Um and then go forward with the due diligence. And I think we can, we, you know, information attached to all of those committees, I think, has already been provided with Justin, even if it hasn't been deliberated by them. So I, we have to just politely say that, you know, you you are able to take the vote without the direct input from all of these committees. And here is our best information related to each of these topics. I just want to throw out the 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 waiting to get the actual committee's decisions, if that's one of, that what they are demanding. Um whether or not you think it's a reasonable demand to make the good faith effort.
Well, that's that's the point I think I was trying to make is you put a deadline and and you meet that deadline. Whether it's our next meeting or whatever else deadline you guys want to put together and say, this is it. I mean, we can't just keep going on on and like to your point, what's the guarantee that the um, you know, the contractor is going to be waiting for us to get this project moving forward?
And I I don't think most of those committees are the main points of concern. I think the two main points of concern are, you know, will this impact the ability to rebuild or expand the MSBA process for the Green Meadows School, which we we've got a lot of documentation and answers on. And then the second one is, you know, are the benefits, how do they weigh against the current uses? Are the benefits, how do they weigh against the current uses of the field? And I I would minimize the hypothetical uses that are put up if there's another, you know. You you can't weigh these definitive real benefits that we're seeing against the hypotheticals that are proposed about some other. Use of the field that hasn't been fully, you know. Explained.
But that was clarified earlier on, if they if they can't use the field, then then this is not, may not be a profitable, you know, project, so.
I I it sounds like I'm alone and the other three of you would like to make the make the call and and. Provide all the information possible that we have now and ask for them to make a decision.
Well, my my one, my one concern, no, no, I and I and I completely understand, and I'm not saying I'm trying to shut shut it out, I I really. But my one concern about. Approaching new committees with. You know, so so if we go by it again, like the documentation thing. When you approach these committees. They're going to have obviously a number of different questions, right? Because they should, because they're committees, so if you're putting this in front of them. And so first of all, is it the select board that's putting this in front of them? Which actually, I think it should be the school committee that puts it in front of them because because they're the ones who want that answer. You know, the select boards putting it in front of them, does that mean that now? You know. Whether it be, you know, Greg or Justin or, you know, whoever, other members of town staff now have to go to eight different meetings to. Explain it all over again for, you know, another hour or two or or whatnot. Because these people, I can promise, some of them probably have not heard of this, so. You know, we are going to, they'll start from scratch. So is that? Worth tasking? If we can get, so I guess my question is, I don't under, I don't know if we can get to a yes. That's what I want. I want to know that we, if we. I want to know what. What we can do. If we can get to a yes. And if I knew that it will probably be a yes. There's just a few more pieces of information that need to be, that need to be ironed out. I would be. I think I would be more willing. But. Right now, it just feels like these questions are. A whole list of reasons why. Someone, you know, whether it's different members of the committee or or whatever, why someone did not, does not want them, there there are a lot of. They seem a lot of leading documentation or a lot of leading documents as opposed to. Just more fact finding, so so again, that's why I. I don't know. That's why I.
I I mean, I I feel horrible to know that. We're going to continue spending the effort and time and we may end up with a no. So that's my, you know, this is where I'm having a difficult time understanding. If we're going to move forward. Based upon waiting to see what their answer is and it may be a no. And so then why are we wasting all this time and effort? To to have this, because we kind of feel like this may not go forward. All right, that's just my my, you know, interpretation of everything that I'm hearing. So. Why, why are we spending so much time on this now?
And I guess that's the, that's the thing is, to be honest, I I mean, I'm I'm just reading the questions over again, and it says that the school committee requires the answers to the following questions as well as well prior to voting, so. I guess if we send back. The answers that we have of, because I know that there has been. Questions, some of these have been asked and answered a few times in different. You know, different arenas. So if we send back what we have, it won't be all of them, so does that mean that it won't be voted on?
That's if if that's the assumption that every single one of these has to, you know, that that they need truly. And these are very firmly worded statements from nine different committees and from all these questions, these documents, then that. That's clearly they're they're making a demand they know that can't be met, so. Then the question is, do they truly need all of those or or are they trying to collect as much information as possible? And if you assume a good faith intent on the school committee, then I think the wise action to do is to make a good faith. Attempt to get as much information as reasonable within a reasonable timeframe, say, a month. Which recognizing that it's not exclusive, but we we can put, you know, and and. We'll have to take and reword as appropriate, you know, our kind of statements to these committees that are. You know, seeing this for the first time, but ask the FinCon, is there another planned or intended use that they know of for that field, et cetera, et cetera? And then on some of the other questions, I think, I think we've, Justin has, I I'm a little confused why we're seeing questions here that I've heard Justin answer in school committee meetings, so I, but we can provide them again. I think the golf course questions particularly worry me because that's completely out of the scope of this project, right? And it's not like solar panels. If if there's opportunity to put solar panels anywhere else in town, then great, that's an and question, but we need to make a decision on the proposal in front of us, so I think that's. You know, how you answer those those kind of questions, so I if or or we say. The extra month doesn't give us that much more in terms of answering these questions, and so we we skip the committee questions. And then we provide full explanations as far as our understanding of the Crow Park legal status, what town council has provided. And and some of the conversations around building suitability and why that site is not a suitable building site for a new green metal school and and we say, here's. Here's all the documentation that we've provided and. Here you are. So that's, that's the, my question is, we we can answer a certain number of these questions and provide a certain number of these documents right now. My question is, does waiting the extra month allow us to ask a significant percentage more of these questions that that allows the school committee to come to yes?
I. I was gonna say, so so for that, I would actually, I'm going to put Greg on the spot, I would ask Greg how much more. I I mean, I guess I'm really putting you on the spot there because I'm not sure what. I know we have answers to a lot of this, so. Are there other things that you think we could get answered within a month that would make a difference?
So yes and no, I think I think we would answer some additional questions, but as to the scheduling and. The willingness of the committees, which I think is a large factor to answer some of those questions, I wouldn't be able to speak to that, of course, but then. I think we have answered a lot of the questions, I think, I think if I wouldn't have. I think two, two things. I if I felt like this wasn't a good thing for the town, I don't, I don't think I would have put this on the agenda in the first place, months ago. Like I I if I wouldn't have advised the board to even consider this, same with Justin, like we, we wouldn't have even gotten this far if we thought this wasn't going to be a good deal, eventually not worth your your time. So we'll answer the questions as best we can, but we, it's. I don't know if we're going to be able to answer to the to the point of satisfying the school committee because we weren't, we weren't. That was not our initial initial intent, our intent was to satisfy the the select board, and so we we felt like we had done that, but we will look at the what questions there remaining, and then we will try to. We would try to satisfy the school committees best we can. Now, if you don't tell me to stop tonight, then we won't, and so we will engage, I think, I think we won't have time to to wait to answer the questions, I think we have to do. I think simultaneously, we have to try to address questions and. Entertain negotiations with some power for the pilot agreement, because I I would rather not lose, oh.
It's battery to just die.
That's why he went, oh.
Yep, no, that's fine, that's fine.
He was finishing saying he would rather not lose the opportunity to capture this.
For the pilot. So I I can understand him him basically wanting direction that if we sat there and said. That we, you know, yes, to a pilot, yes, we think that that's a good idea. As the direction they can start that and and like I said, I'm not. I really think a lot of these questions. Have been answered and and I personally would. I would be okay moving forward with. The questions that have been answered and just hand it back and say these, this is the answer, this is what we have and and. We can do. I'm hesitant to figure out where that line is on the research. I'm sorry, I'm waffling, I completely.
No, I I I'm I'm on board with you, I I believe that, you know, there comes a point where. The amount of time that goes into researching. Data points. That at the end of the day may not shift any opinions whatsoever, it's make work. You know, it's, are we really getting to where the real issues of concern are with school? Is each one of these questions really a critical issue relative to their decision making process? Or is there just one or two that are critical in answering their questions? That we could focus on and not have to focus on twenty one questions. That. Spends.
Dave, why, why then put all those questions, then why come up with all those questions?
Because I I I wasn't, I I'm not privy to how those, the questions were. Were accumulated by the schools, whether or not it was voted on, we're going to send this list of questions to the town, does everybody agree, I, I, I? Or if it was just, please send us your. Questions and we'll send them off to the school. Lydia, I will ask you directly.
I'm sorry, Lydia, you're muted.
I'm also not allowed to talk.
Do the sign language.
Okay, so we'll, so. I believe Lydia is referring to a conversation that she and I had where I I believe. Where we were talking about how it's difficult sometimes when you have multiple members of another committee. In the select board meeting and it kind of feels almost like a joint meeting when it's not supposed to be. So I think that is Lydia's way of trying to respect that. If she is willing to have a conversation. I'm willing to listen, but the other part of it is I also did promise her that I would not put her on the spot, so because I know how hard that is sometimes when. You're in as a liaison to another another committee and someone asks you a question to represent. You know, the select board or or whatnot, so Lydia, if you would like to speak, you're more than welcome. And if you would not, we can converse by email.
I'm sorry, I tried really hard to stay quiet, but I am so upset with the way you were presenting this whole situation. And the half truths and the false narrative, and I really think it's unfair. Of the school committee for you to be putting this on us by saying things like, had you known last November that we wanted these questions answered? We didn't even know about the project until December fifteenth, we didn't know that the scope had been. Had been increased to include the Green Meadow Field until December fifteenth, okay?
Actually, actually, Lydia, I'm going to interrupt you there, according to your minutes, you actually talked about. The solar array encompassing the Green Meadow Field in November.
You need to show me those minutes because that is not something I recall, I don't remember ever speaking about it. So anyway, and when Justin came on December fifteenth, we made it clear we were not comfortable. With that field being used and we asked him to look into an alternative. And we were told that that would be looked into, we never heard back. We asked if we would be informed about the progress of the project and the negotiations, and Justin said there was a lot of work that still had to be done, but yes. They would come back once there was more information, we were not ready to vote on it. It wasn't until our more March fourth meeting, yours, mine, Greg and Brian's. When I said, look, the school committee is feeling really uncomfortable, we don't know what the status is, and if we were to vote today. It wouldn't pass, we need to know what's going on, it wasn't until then that Justin came and presented to us. In in the middle of March and let us know that basically everything had been worked out, the negotiations were going forward. And we were told that we, you know, you guys could just proceed without us, whether we liked it or not. And it wasn't until then that we started gathering information, it wasn't until then that we started gathering our questions. And we had been put off and put off and put off, so for you to say. That we should have been asking these months ago is disingenuous and not fair to the school committee. We are not being obstructionist, there are, actually, the majority of the school committee wants this project to go forward, so this whole like. Unless we're going to get to, yes, I don't want to talk about it, is a bunch of crap, I'm sorry. We want to make sure that this is a legal project, you have not done your due diligence, you have not.
Lydia. Please don't yell at me in my own meeting. I understand that you are frustrated.
Frustrated, Justine, you have painted us out to be irresponsible and 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 unprofessional and whatever else, yes, you have.
I am sorry that you're interpreting it that way.
Okay, and there you go again, being passive aggressive and projecting. I'm done with you.
Thank you, thank you. Again, so I apologize to everyone for the outburst, I. I understand that the school committee.
Don't apologize for me, Justin.
And I'm sorry, she was still unmuted. I apologize to everyone who. Who might feel slighted by this. And frustrated by this. What I will say from the town perspective is that, and again, we have, we have gone over this again and again and again. This started as a school project. School committee members, a school committee liaison was part of this. We have consistently trusted our town staff to. Do the right thing, we are confident that they have done their due diligence. We are confident that we could move forward with this project if it is something that the school committee wanted to do. We have also made it clear in the last month that we will not move forward with this project if it is not something the school committee is comfortable with. And the reason for that is because it was a school committee project to begin with, there was a school project to begin with. It was a collaboration because we had a procurement officer and we were more than willing to help. If it's not something that they're comfortable with. Then then that's something that. That there's nothing else to say about that. I apologize, does anyone have any other?
May I, David?
Yeah, go right ahead.
I I would like to hear from Lydia, basically what my question was to to this board is if. We were to take some extra time. Reach out to several of these committees, which I think is the most time intensive of of some of these. And if we can't guarantee that we'll get all nine statements exactly as worded, but we can get some input. Would the fact that we don't have yeses from all nine committees on the exact wording jeopardize the project? Are you looking for a perfect nine out of nine on these statements? Or if we provide the best faith information we can, you know, given a reasonable amount of time, so we're not falling off that fiscal cliff. Can we still find a way to get to yes on the project?
Jeff. My reason or our reason for including those questions for the other committees is because we had heard from several other people in the community. About their concern regarding the use of the Green Meadow Field. I basically just wanted to include them in the conversation, and when Justine says stuff like. A lot of them aren't aware of it, well, why is that? Why is it that a lot of them aren't aware of it? It's because she didn't want to engage the community in the conversation when I made it very.
Let's not make this personal, let's not make it.
David, it's my question and I would like to to follow up, just with without going back to the interactions and what's happened in the past. Looking at the proposal right now forward for my question, if we spend the time to go and reach out to as many of these committees as reasonably possible, depending on their meeting schedule in the next month. And if we come back and we say, get maybe a handful of yeses and a handful of, it's a difficult considerations. Would that mean an automatic rejection from the school committee or?
It would not, and I was actually fully prepared to reach out to all of those committees myself, it was, for whatever reason, Brian and Greg decided to take that on. I was going to do it. So. So I have no problem with that, I just want to hear what other people's feedback is, that's all, the school committee does not feel comfortable making decision of this magnitude. When we have heard so many people. Give us feedback that they don't want it to happen.
Thank you, Lydia, I appreciate your answer to that question, and I don't, you're not making the decision alone, we would have to make the decision as well, and if you approved it, we would also have to approve it and we would, we would be. On the hook for the negative feedback that's coming from all those individuals as well, so you're you're certainly not taking on this alone.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Now, given what I heard from Lydia, to me, it sounds like. If it's not an absolute requirement that we have, every single document is listed, it's it's that if we make the best faith effort we can to get feedback from these committees. And if that causes us to miss the new growth, but we still have a reasonable expectation. That we can keep the seventy thousand dollars as opposed to the block for forty thousand dollar economic benefit, that seems to. that we can keep the seventy thousand dollars as opposed to the block four forty thousand dollar economic benefit, that seems to me the best path for this project. Without incurring too much extra town time to keep it alive and try at our best shot at getting to yes on the project.
Okay, so are you thinking, so I know you said a month, Jeff, so are you thinking that?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Lydia. I'm sorry, Justine.
So, no worries. So, I mean, I, so obviously I, I push it to May fourth. I think personally, I would like to see a decision, again, by the absolute, absolute latest, by the, the second meeting in May. That's, that's a month from now. It wouldn't give us a full month to get any, get all the information, but it would give a little bit more time. Is that, would that be a compromise that you think that?
I mean, it's, it's, here's my problem is, I would love to give them as much time as possible, but if we're walking closer and closer to a cliff that we can't see monetarily, then we, we have to make our best guess and that's, it's very difficult to make that judgment. So I, I think I would push for, a month seems about right to me, but without, as, as Justin said, there's too many complexities. And when that cliff happens to know for certain and, and to be, you know, in best business practices with the developer. So a, a month to me feels fair because that's about the frequency of some of the less frequency. You know, some committees meet on a month frequency, so a month gives you hopefully a decent shot at hitting most of these. And if not, putting a statement that's worded exactly the way it's here. In front of me, at least getting some feedback from those committees, if not a decision that's useful for the school committee to help come to their final decision. So that's, that's one of the reasons I'm saying a month is you're going to hit the meeting frequency of most of these groups. And two months, I think you're getting too close to that fiscal cliff. So that's, that's why I suggested it. If we want to say three weeks and we can still hit most of these committees, then I would, it, it's, it's, there's no right answer. It's, it's a, it's a guessing game of, you know, how much information we can get without risking getting too close to the project entering economic territory where it's no longer viable.
I think that, and, and so that, that's the thing is, I just want to make sure that, so if we make the decision at our second meeting, that would mean the information would have to be the school committee the week before, I would say.
So much time is been put in this. If we need to have a special meeting to come in right after, whenever the school committee is comfortable to vote on it, I'm going to do that to, to try. If, if that saves the project.
Okay.
I, I'm interested in hearing from, from Greg and from Justin about their. And I know that, that they'll say, well, they'll do whatever they, we ask them to do, but the reality is are, is the burden too much to get additional information? Because we've been focusing on the seven committees and, you know, that is probably the, the least of the concerning issues relative to getting information. I think there's, there's more information and Greg has said that we have a lot of it, but I don't know how much of it we have. Again, my concern is more on the burden on the staff and the amount of time that we're going to utilize to get there with no guarantee of, of an eventual approval of the project and have wasted, wasted energy and time. I sense, as Lydia mentioned, you know, I sense the school committee probably it wants this thing because it, it is, it's, 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 what's the word I want to use? I mean, to have a, a solar array on your, on, on your, your, your facility is great. And to be able to utilize it as part of your curriculum is fantastic. And we've got that right now, and I don't want to lose that, that opportunity. But I also don't want to have us, and I've used this phrase unfairly or unfairly, I don't want to have our staff spinning wheels for an eventual no. And that's my frustration.
My, my answer to that, David, would be to, to tell Greg and Justin that if, if it can be done relatively easily, do it. If it's going to be in onerous use of time, you have to make the best judgment on what we can get. But given our conversation, I, I think we get as much as possible within a reasonable amount of time. So some, some of the, we can't go and take, you know, soil samples within the next month and that. So just to give an example, but I, I think, I think that the, the time gains us the ability to go to the committees and, and get input from their deliberation. I think, I, I, I don't think there's much documentation that we don't already have and answers from council that we don't already have. That those, I think we can start preparing and, and translating those, you know, translating from the documents and information to direct responses to the questions that we have. I can, we can start doing most of those tomorrow. So I, I wouldn't, I, I, I think for most of the documentation, that's where we are. I think the time component is to get that committee input that, that they're asking for. That seems to be the, the big burden there. And Greg, feel free to chime in if you think there, there, there is some specific questions about trade off between staff time and documents that you could get, or Justin.
Oh, so I'll, I'll speak first because Justin can kind of answer your question as to how many questions we can ask. But I would ask him the same question. And I, and the scope of what I would need to hear is the school committee's meeting. So when the, if the school committee is going to meet in the next two weeks, I have a deadline. So within two weeks of whatever Brian Haas says, you know, like I like to have all my materials for the select board four to five days ahead of time, right? And that's kind of my cutoff. Like, I don't like to, I like y'all to read it. So I would ask Brian, what's the cutoff for getting materials to the school committee for their, for their deliberation of whatever their next meeting is? Where this might be an agenda item, which I assume is collaborative between Brian and Lydia. They figure out what the agenda is and what's going to be on it. So then he tells me, I need, I need stuff by Thursday, whatever, in two weeks. Now I have a deadline. And then, and then Justin and I say, how many questions can we get answered between now and then? And how many, how many committee input can we get? And, and I don't think they're going to give a statement. I, I suspect that the school, that the individual committees. Sustainability committee doesn't even exist yet. So like, we, we might, you know, like, we're not going to get everything. And so, and those that do, that those that are able to meet in that, whatever that window of period of time, they're, they may not be able to make a decision on the first night, right? But at least, at least we'll have them be aware of it. And, and then we'll, we'll get as much as we can to the school committee by whatever that deadline is. And then it's up to the school committee. And the school committee gives, you know, that they, it was their documents, right? So they can change them. There's, they're not, those aren't laws. Those aren't, you know, the laws can change too, but it doesn't, like, they can change them. It's the school committee's documents. So if the school committee decides, and this is what I think you're getting to, Jeff, and is like, they, they, those statements are there, but that, does that mean they have to abide by those statements? No, they can amend both, those documents. They can amend those statements. So based on the information that we give them, and, and then, and then you see what they have to say. But I, I simultaneously, as I said before, my computer turned off, that I, that I, I would try to, and this is a lot. This is a lot of work to do both, is to engage, do engage with the negotiations as well as do the research. A lot of the research was done. I mean, like, like, that's, that's true. I, we, we've, we have a lot of those answers. Otherwise, we wouldn't have progressed as far as we have with the project. If we, if there was like a red flag along the way. So we, we will, we will, we'll try to get as much as we can. And then, and keep the board informed as to, as what the school committee says. You know, I, I assume Brian Haas will let me know how it goes. And then, and then we'll get that information. But I don't, I don't think anyone really wants this project to go away. I don't, in general, the concept of the project. But, uh, I, I've, you know, Justin and I hear what the, what the friction points are. The, the ownership, the field usage, the, the revenue and how the revenue is shared, like, we, we hear those same points. But, you know, our job is to give the information and advise you guys, both, both, both bodies, you know, like, and, and see where you are. So that's, I think that's my email tomorrow is ask Brian when, when this might be on an agenda.
Okay.
All right. So Justin, you, do you want it? But the question was also to Justin, if you, without going over all the questions right now, like, what's your, what's your gut tell you about how many of those questions we might? This is a, is a tough question to ask you, but like, how many of those questions might you be able to answer? With the understanding we're not going to get a hundred percent.
Right. So roughly fifty percent have been answered. Most of the recent questions are opinions. Opinions, they're, they're chasing opinions of council. They're chasing opinions of the state in their inventory process and how they do data layers in GIS. Some of those will take four months, but don't really determine the viability and the use restrictions on the deed process. So we can kind of narrow down, which we have, and some of the documents that are included in the board docs, as you can see, there's probably about ten to fifteen town meeting warrant articles that kind of pinpoint how that parcel is broken down and, and can be activated. And then there's some assumptions. Assumptions, we can't necessarily give you answers on assumptions, but we can give you guidance. So answering the questions, about fifty percent, some of them will be guidance based on assumptions.
All right. So given that, I'm willing to follow Jeff's suggestion that we, you know, go out a month or whatever the time limit is that we want to extend it, but clearly not next, our next meeting, but a month. And hope to get enough information to the school committee by that point that we can move forward and have them vote and, and go forward with, with the project.
Looks like Natasha has a question.
Hi, Justine, thank you. I, I had a question and follow up to Jeff's question about that cliff. What type of monitoring or feedback, who would raise the flag when we are approaching that cliff? I just want to make sure, understand, like, if that happens.
Justin answered that, but that would be Beth Greenblatt, I believe.
It's a combination of many, many factors. It could be the developer. If the developer starts to have inclinations that this project's economics aren't valuable, they're going to pull out, which is part of the cliff. The length of time based off of the supply and demand of the tariff will start to execute that. And we'll, we might not know that until ever source actually approaches Sun Power and say, your application has now been moved to tariff four. We won't know that until it happens. They don't give advance notice to that. So there's a number of factors that move us closer to that cliff.
Okay, so there wouldn't be like a, a warning or some person, like, eh, application that we would be made to, I guess, to pass along that feedback if, within the next four weeks, if that is approaching, is kind of what I'm trying to understand a little bit.
If we find out, we're going to tell, I mean, work, if we, if we find, that's a significant change. So like, no, I mean, like, you'll see an email from somebody, but it won't. It may not be at the formal, like.
I don't like to assume at this point anything. I just want to make sure I'm asking to understand. So that, from what I'm saying, it sounds like you would send an email to Brian and then he, that would be the, the, the chain of communication of that information. Great. Thank you.
I would just, just to help kind of give you some time, a month will not necessarily take us out of block five. A month will significantly impact us in negotiations and capturing new growth, as Jeff has alluded to. But the longer that we have what is potentially a silent block of non-negotiation and conversation with Sun Power not moving forward creates a void and an idea and an assumption from the developer that they might not want to continue to go through.
Lack of interest.
It's bargaining in good faith. You have to stay engaged. So we're, yeah.
Well, I think the conversation is a good faith effort to, for, on, on, on the town's behalf to, to make this project come to fruition. And I would rather have it succeed without new growth than not succeed because then it doesn't matter if it captures new growth.
Can, can I, and like, one last question. I don't know if this is something that you'd be able to provide. I, I know part of the questions was about the financial structure, and we kind of touched on this in our subcommittee meeting the other day. In the event the pilot is not part of that, is there, can you outline what that, like, roughly might look like in, in, in benefit? I know you talked about like ten percent, I mean, about approximately ten thousand dollars in credits, but like, if the pilot's not there, what is that? How does that number change at all for the town?
I can just give you a quick overview. There will always be three buckets based off of the SMART program. AOC onboard credits, which would offset electric use. A pilot or property tax, and the pilot is in lieu of tax. That's what that is. And then there is a lease payment. Each one has a criteria under DOR. Credits are something that the town is familiar with as we have credits based on our current solar project, which offset facilities' electric use. And that is something that, as a board, we can come to consensus and easily decide where those credits are applied. That is an easy one for all the boards to come to consensus with. The pilot is in lieu of taxes, which has to follow, as you can see from Lisa Mead's opinion, it has to follow the necessary re-appropriations of funding. A lease of pay, lease payment, you can dictate that in a specific manner to a specific fund. Almost similar to our cellular rental lease agreement for our cell towers. So there's always going to be three buckets of money. And Beth will always say this, that all three will eventually equate to the seventy-two. But it's not a guarantee how the three are going to come in. That is up for negotiation.
Right. And the advantage was having it on the new growth or not. So, but, but even that, I, I like the, I'm glad, keep saying credits, so it's not like you're getting a check for ten thousand dollars.
Right.
Spending on utilities anymore. So, all right.
Thank you.
All right. So, so Greg, even though, do you want us, even though Justin said it would be a hard, it would be a hard, a heavy lift? Do you want us to give you direction to say, yes, try to negotiate a pilot? Or at this point, do you think that that is?
You didn't tell me no. So I, I, now, maybe you did in my computer. So I, unless someone is, is, unless someone objects to moving the project forward. Moving the project forward is two things. It's, it's, it's getting buy-in, which includes the school committee, which requires the, the information, and it's, and it's negotiating. So you haven't told me to stop the project. So we're, we're going to do those two things.
Okay, all right. Does anyone have anything else before we move on? Greg, you got the direction you need?
Yes, I have, thank you. No, this is, this is good. I didn't, I didn't expect it to be like a, a motion.
Yeah, right, right, right. So, all right, all right. All right. So then let us move on to item number eleven, which is. Oh, sorry, twelve. I denied, want to revisit eleven again.
I don't want to revisit that.
Item number twelve, one marble farm. I will entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to waive the right to purchase one marble farm road.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Greg?
I'm going to bounce past this to Assistant Town Administrator, Zimudo. Megan?
Hey, so there is an opportunity for the town to purchase one marble farm. It is a deed restricted unit that had, that is for affordable, it's an affordable unit in town. The, oh, the previous owner passed away recently. And the way the deed rider works is that the municipality has the opportunity to purchase the unit. However, and we did speak with our housing consultant and town council. And there doesn't seem to be any reason that, you know, we'd want to purchase this because if we don't purchase it, then what we're allowing for a qualified buyer who would fit the affordable housing, you know, threshold to purchase the unit. It would continue to be an affordable unit on our books. There really is not a reason that I can think of that the town would want to purchase it. But it is, you know, up to the town to decide that. And so I did bring this to the Affordable Housing Trust earlier this month, and they voted on the sevens to recommend against the, the purchase of the unit. And I think I put in here that, you know, town council also recommends that, that it wouldn't make sense really as, you know, part of the plan in the town to purchase the unit, to leave it for someone else who would buy it. So, but to make it official, I wanted to bring it to you and, you know, after bringing it to the Affordable Housing Trust to, to make sure that there wasn't anything we were missing and see if the, if the select board would be interested in purchasing. And if not, then to formally waive the rights.
Okay, all right. Does anyone have any questions? You did such a great job explaining that, that no questions. All in favor? Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes.
Madam Chair, can I ask who, who?
Who seconded?
Made the motion, who seconded? I'm sorry.
I made the motion.
And I seconded.
All right, thank you.
All right. And so next, I think we're probably going to hear from Assistant Town Administrator Zimudo again regarding the Florida Road Bridge Reconstruction Update.
Yes, thank you. This is an exciting one. We got a little shout out from Representative Hogan earlier in her remarks as well. I just wanted to brief the board on the progress that we've made on the Florida, the Florida Road Bridge Construction Project. You know, as you know, we've been working on this for some time with the state and the federal government. And really, our role in town has been to work on the right-of-way and the easement process. Because that area is really tight. There's a lot of property lines and, and you know, properties that go right up to the water into the bridge. So to do this work, we will require temporary and permanent easements. And so we've been working on that. And we had a article at town meeting at our last special town meeting to approve that. But I just wanted to give the board an update because we will be doing the hearing for the taking of the properties. at um the May eighteenth meeting. We just got received um federal environmental approval from NEPA. And so we were able to kind of move the project forward, send out, we did an appraisal for all the properties. We sent out a written offer package to the affected properties. Um, it's only five property owners, so it's not a, it's not a big group of people. We've been able to really speak with most of them. We also had a public hearing last February um in twenty twenty. And I have received some feedback from some property owners that have more specific questions about, you know, how it's gonna impact their property. So we're having those conversations. But I just wanted to kind of give an update and let the board know how it's moving forward, because um, you know, when we do get to that meeting on, um, it's gonna be May eighteenth, the hearing. It is a very time sensitive project, because the funding for this project is coming from the state and federal government. So we they need the, we need to have the takings completed prior to advertising construction. So I just wanted to make sure. Um, and you know, I can can put this on the agenda again for the next meeting, but I wanna make sure any questions can be kind of discussed ahead of time, so that um I will not, we will not be the ones holding it up when um, you know, Mass DOT comes in to start working on the bridge, basically. So um, it's a, it's a much smaller project than, you know, the rail trail, which I'm sure some of you are involved in, you know, the the easements and the right of way takings, but it is, it is essential and it has a lot of moving pieces, but luckily, we've been working with uh Mass DOT and our town council. And, you know, really been kind of following all of their guidance and and we're on track to start construction this summer.
Fantastic.
Great. Um, I though I had one question, and it was just about, I know that when we talked about locating the um the spots that were gonna have to be taken. Um, there was some concerns from residents um on Florida Road regarding the parking that they typically park. Uh, is it? No, Railroad Street, I'm sorry, on Railroad Street, the the parking that's right along um Railroad Street. And they're concerned that the people who are now being relocated from like behind the post office and things like that, that they're going to encroach on that parking. And I was wondering if anything had been looked into about that?
Yeah, I mean, I think so. You know, the good thing about for parking for um the town of Maynard is, you know, you can park on the street, you can park in all municipal lots um overnight, except for the three months of our winter um parking ban. So there is a good, I mean, it's not ideal. I mean, it's to have to lose that parking, that parking lot where people rely on it. I I completely you know, have been reaching out and we've doing a lot, doing a lot of outreach. We understand that that it, that's difficult for people that rely on that. Um, but there is other municipal parking available. So when we're talking about that three-month period where, you know, people were um paying for permits and parking in that lot, the Parking Authority is starting to look for and will determine additional parking for um those winter months, because our currently our winter parking program is for the River Street Lot, and it was the Florida Road Lot. Um, so since we're taking that one offline, we're looking to find another one kind of on that end of downtown as close as we can. And we'll be working with, um, well, Justin sits on the Parking Authority, Chief Noble does. So we'll be working it all out together and try to identify um an additional kind of corner of parking spots that we can allow for overnight parking in those winter months to support the residents in that side of town. So that's definitely a priority for us, and I think it's on my our agenda for our Parking Authority meeting later this week.
Oh, great, great, thank you. Anyone have any questions for Megan? Excellent.
If you do, send them to me. So just, you know, any any questions that come out, please do, cuz I I just, you know, we wanna make sure um you know, everyone has all the questions answered. That's all. So thank you very much.
Are we doing any um direct outreach to to residents who may be on, say, Euclid or the other, I forget the name of the road across the street who are not directly on Florida Road, but who will be impacted in terms of traffic flow? Are they gonna be shocked one day when all of a sudden June, this is shut down for two years?
Well, those are two different questions, I think. Have we done the outreach and will people be shocked? I, you know, we have done outreach. Um, you know, we had a public hearing last year, you know, but and that went to all the butters in the whole area about the timeline and everything. It has been a while. Um, that was, you know, certified mailing um formal outreach, but um I think that's a good point. I think, yeah, we should, we should continue to reach out to the residents that are not necessarily impacted by the easements, but are, you know, the traffic is is a good point, Jeff. I'll definitely take that.
And I think Justin has something to add to it.
Yeah, Jeff, I can add on to that. This is really, right now, OMS's baby, as the easements are the most important aspects. Once the easements and the taking come into place, then Mass DOT will bid out the project. The design is is complete. Once that bid project goes out and is awarded, we'll have pre-con meetings between the DPW and the Awarding Authority and Mass DOT. At that time, we'll start to develop what's called like a timeline where we can start to do our hyperreached program, put it out to Facebook, just from our normal outreach program, where we can kind of pump out some information that should be able to, you know, kind of cover the entirety of the area, detours, etc.
And unfortunately, there's just no means of communication where you can reliably reach everybody in town, like, you know, the newspaper days of old. So I was, I was really focused more on targeted outreach to the to the people who specifically use that bridge on a daily for commute or live, you know, very close to one end and just need to get to the post office on the other end, etc.
So we can, yeah, we can do that reverse nine-one-one. It's a hyperreach. We can do an isolated or we can do townwide. We have, we try to hit as many aspects as we can. Um, and I think this is part of that uh process too. Word of mouth is always good.
And so we can use the police uh board, put it up, down towards the live, towards the uh uh the post office and have it up there for a month or so before the thing starts to say, hey. Although that doesn't help people coming from the other direction up towards art space, but uh, you know.
And that one we are using for outdoor dining right now. Um, but.
Yeah, I I you've you've answered my question. I just wanted to make.
We don't start, the project won't start until June or July, so if we if we can get it out there, just an idea. Even if it's a standing of like a sandwich type board saying, hey, on such and such a date. Um, this is gonna, this road's gonna shut down for two years.
Yeah. It's gonna have an impact. I mean, people, it's 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 a cut through.
Uh, I'm concerned about public safety. I'm sure the police and fire have been worried. I've been talking about what they're going to do to get to places quicker. Uh, but it's also become much more popular of uh roadway to have to use since the left, no left turn into CVS became
I do that.
Became more of, you know, enforced, because now people that come out of Walnut Street that either have to take a right and go all the way down, and then if they wanna cut through the basin or whatever, or they can go to the left and go up and around that way, but a lot of people use it as a way to get to CVS.
I never thought about going through. I always took a right.
That's what I.
All the way around.
Well, you only have a couple more months to try it out.
Alright. Alright, we all set with this? So my one question for the board, I know that, so Megan has kind of showed, has has said that this is something that um is kind of time sensitive. So what I'll say is if for some reason something comes up and you do wanna see this on the next agenda for some reason, can you just reach out and let me know or let Greg know? Um, if you have questions that come up or or something before uh before the actual public hearing. Just so we know. And my computer just shut off. Greg, you're contagious. Uh, okay. Sorry, uh, so moving on to, wait. Yeah, so moving on to Garfield Road, item, uh, Garfield Avenue, item number fourteen. Um, and it's just more of a providing direction regarding our residents' concern for Garfield Ave as a paper street.
Right, so Madam Chair, there um, a couple of weeks ago, this was brought up. There was residents of that were concerned about Garfield and Butler. Um, Garfield Avenue for for those, everyone following at home. Um, there is a, there's a street that, and there's not a street, that's between a couple of houses off of Butler. Uh, Garfield Avenue is considered a paper street, which is just a a nickname for something that might not actually be on official paper. It's just, we can see it on a map and you can drive by it, but it's not, not necessarily accepted um as a public way. So um, Justin had done a lot of the research. I'll summarize it that that it's it's a private, it's private right now. So right now, the town's town's understanding is that it's a private dispute be between between neighbors. Um, but the board had asked town staff to to look into if there was other options. Um, and the other option, I think, is to make it uh a no longer a private matter, which means eminent domain. So we can do a taking um and and then do an eminent domain process, which we've done similar processes. You can think of like Rockland Avenue and whatnot, whenever you have to take taking it a a public way. Um, and eventually it does go to town meeting. Um, but it's a lengthy process, so it there's costs associated with that process, you know, yes, there's legal fees and whatnot, but also um, the time costs and and notices and public and uh and for the neighbors' notices when that um, survey probably has to be done. Um, so we're, I'm looking, does, how? This isn't a motion, maybe it should have been, but how would the board like to proceed? Would you like to keep it a private matter, or would you like the the town to pursue um a taking?
One one issue that I would raise, Greg, I raised it with you on a phone call, um relative to the zoning of that piece of that particular stretch. I went down there the other day and looked at what's going on, and basically, one of these people literally built a driveway on what is essentially town property. And it because it's 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 currently owned by the town, is it not? And these people.
But that's why we have to take it, right?
So if it's if it's a a paper street and it is, it just, there's there's this plot of land that's there. Who owns that square of land that's there? Basically, there's a square, and then there's a set of woods, and then there's a walkway behind it that I think kids kids use this cross as a as a way to get get there. Essentially, my view, it's it's located on Butler Ave. It's a little open area on Butler Ave on the left-hand side as you're heading up, although um, the the road that it's actually part of crosses at that spot, but it ends at a T intersection. So my question is, how can somebody just throw down uh, you know, rocks and park trucks on on a piece of property that doesn't belong to them?
I I'm I'm gonna ask Justin for his input. My understanding is that because it's split four ways, that it's that it's that it's shared by all, I know this is not a good answer, but it's shared by all four. So, Justin, do you wanna kind of clarify?
Yeah, so I don't know if, I'll give you a quick brief history, but unfortunately, Maynard technically has fifty-four unaccepted roadways.
Right.
Uh, it's a real issue in town. Um, some of the bigger issues are like Fletcher and Allen. Those are unacceptable roads and they're deteriorating.
Yeah.
They're not part of our asset management plan. Um, that's kind of why Garfield Ave, at this little stretch of woods, at one point was an actual butuminous concrete roadway that was abandoned because it's an unacceptable road. There's two ways to do this, and the reason it's referred to as a paper street is that these are subdivisions. So at one time, these were subdivisions, and the developer created the roadways to get to the dwellings. And if the proper planning aspect didn't take place and wasn't adopted through town meeting, then the town never actually accepted those roads as a public right of way. So technically, Garfield Ave and Garfield Street are both unaccepted roadways. And there's two ways to look at this. It depends on how the developer created the deed parcels for the actual dwellings. Sometimes the survey marks go out to the center line of a paper road or an actual roadway. And that means that the abutters technically own it. Other times, the survey goes to the edge of roadway, and the developer in perpetuity through deed restrictions owns and is is responsible for those roadways forever, whether it's their trust, their LLC, etc. Um, until they request town accept it. Usually, developers will request town acceptance immediately following the actual construction process, because at that point in time, it's easier for the town to accept something that it's in prime condition. Um, the reason that we're kind of still sitting on fifty-four unaccepted streets is most of these subdivisions are well over twenty, thirty years old. And that process has never come to fruition, because at this point, we either need to take it by eminent domain, or we need to create a bylaw that would allow citizens' petitions of a certain criteria to come to the board, and the board levy a bond to replace the road and accept the road, and then put a lien on those property tax owners until they pay it off. So in the end, really, they're still paying for the road to get up to standards then for acceptance. So the two processes really are eminent domain, a taking, which would come at a cost to the town through legal counsel, and then through the development of the road. So if you took that road, what is the next choice? I'm assuming you want to redevelop that as a road or just take it? And that, you know, each one comes in progression. So the options in front of the board are create an eminent domain taking and a road layout, but I will tell you that I am in constant communication with a number of residents who all want their fifty-four unaccepted roads to be accepted. Um, I have a large amount of residents on Fletcher and Allen that call me regularly. So just kind of think of this in a bigger holistic view um as you make your decision.
I I guess it's, so in this particular, uh, you mentioned that there sometimes is a deed restriction given. In this instance, what what's the the person who built the driveway or the parking spot, it's essentially a parking spot they built? What are their deed restrictions, if any, as far as you know, on this property right now?
So we didn't dig into that, because that would be asking us to take potentially public funding and interfere with private issues. So that's why I tried to give, so originally, myself and Chris DeSilva was the chair at the time, we received correspondence, I think the TA's office, we received a number of correspondence from a bunch of residents. And we tried to answer some of the questions, just to kind of help our residents and and guide them in the direction that they could kind of figure this out between the four of them. And if they couldn't, then their next steps were to involve a um a council of their own to look into their land records and kind of proceed in that manner. Um, I think at this point, none of them have proceeded past the conversation that I've had.
I think what's changed since last year with the correspondence is this, last year, there was no, the the one person had not put down uh a a parking spot. Now they've created a parking spot in what used to be just a grassy area that somebody would come out and mow, uh, because, you know, it it looked better to mow it. But now they've put a truck there and it's parked there. And so somebody is using first off, I think we're losing out on tax money, because they're using property that they uh that they don't own and parking the car there, our truck there permanently. Meanwhile, the neighbors are getting uh, this this property that previously was just open space is now has a truck parked there. And and I guess from what I'm hearing is that the uh we haven't done the research to determine rightfully or wrongfully if this person is parking on shared spot, a spot that they already pay taxes for, because theoretically, they own to the middle of that that roadway from the description you gave, or possibly parking on public property.
Well, no, Dave, I can confirm it's not public property.
But we don't know whose land, we don't know whose land they're parking on.
It's either butter, the adjacent of butter, or the Development Trust. So it's Hayes Development.
But they're parking on somebody, parking on somebody's property other than their own.
Correct. Well, not necessarily. It could be their own. So both, I would tell you that area is manicured. So there are abutters, the DPW isn't taking care of that.
No, they they they've admitted that they they've been mowing it, you know, because the kids play there.
Correct. Yeah, so go ahead, Jeff.
Is it, is it potential this is deeded to some developer that has no idea that they have the deed to this parcel of land?
It could be in their trust in perpetuity. They're responsible to maintain it. And that's.
Okay, some developer from, okay.
So majority, uh, so Jeff, just for some context, a majority of the fifty-four unaccepted roads are Hayes Development.
And that's because of various issues dating back historically, but they they what traditionally, from what I understand, happened was that he agreed to do certain things, and the town never took a bond out on it. He never did the certain things, and he left. And so he left without fulfilling his obligations to finish his roadways, and the town never accepted the streets.
And that's exactly what the history looks like, David. So at this point, the decision really is. And that's exactly what the history looks like, David. So at this point, the decision really is, do we want them? Do we want to make all the unaccepted roads accepted roads? Do we do it as a blanket? Or do we do it as in a synchronized manner? You know, thi- thi- this is a big conversation. I think this is a good starting point. This is a large
I'm just concerned for the neighbors who have now a truck parked on a piece of property that somebody just decided to grab.
Are they complaining?
Yes, they're complaining.
If they built a parking spot on on land they don't know, and what's to stop the other neighbors from deconstructing parking spot?
So that in the end is the the dispute, the private private dispute that I explained. I tried to I always try to encourage neighbors. I get a lot of calls for a lot of things, you know, trees, because of the tree ward and, you know, overhanging properties. Always try to encourage neighbors to try to work it out amongst themselves and then just give them the guidance of where they need to go. And acquiring a a council, if it's at that point, acquiring counsel to at least write a letter to start the process is probably the best situation at this point. But our our recourse as the public is to take it by eminent domain and then we could potentially remove them.
Is there value to taking it by eminent domain and splitting it four ways and solveting the property off to the four neighbors or
So take it and then sell it?
Sure, if if in in quarters to the four different lots.
We might, uh, yeah, you could get some tax value out of it, but it's not it's not a significant
Talking about a lot of money.
Theoretically, if it's big enough to build on, you can sell it to a developer for a significant amount of money.
I I think Hayes would have done that if he was, it was.
He ran, he he ran because he he owed the town too much. That's why he had too many things he had to do and he couldn't, he couldn't do it.
You don't want to create another road there that we need to maintain that's not necessary for the flow of traffic, right?
So Jeff, the reason that road was abandoned is because it became so degraded that it was unfunctional. So that's happening with some of our others. So this conversation is a good one to start because of our fifty-four other unaccepted roads are starting to get to that point.
But but the other ones are required for access to houses, whereas this one, if it
This one laser is it's and it's now grass covered. It's it it's it's like a little yard.
Right.
So now you understand why we're asking the question to the board, because if you want us to, if you want us to so basically, we we see it as a private matter and they and they can engage and they can go to the registry of deeds and find out that sure enough, it is Hayes and then find whatever phone number or email or address is on there, which no one may actually pick up. Or we can do that on our own and engage town council to do that. But I'm not, to what end? That's what Justin's asking, like to to the end is, do you want to do an eminent domain?
I don't, I'm not sure I see the value in doing an eminent domain here. What 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 is the value to the town?
It's kind of cost money too to
Well, unless unless the lot, the land, and I don't know the answer to this, if it was big enough to build on, the town seizes the property by eminent domain, sells that land, which is a good sized square. It's it might be big enough to build a house on. You sell it to a developer who then builds a house and they have, therefore it is worth money to the town. And then you get future revenue from it as a as a taxable piece of property. But I don't know if it's big enough, I don't know if it's a big enough square to
I I'm I'm with Jeff. I'm 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 not in favor of doing this by, you know, eminent domain, just let it be a private, you know, argument that you're gonna have.
And that's that's fine. I just wouldn't want to be, I wouldn't want to be a neighbor who suddenly has their, uh, somebody's roofing truck parked in, uh, you know, in in an area next to your, next to your house. It's just
Well, I think that the thing is, though, if you, if we, if we took what you're proposing, what the the thought of
Well, I I never said eminent domain until I heard it mentioned tonight, so that's not my suggestion.
No, I completely, but I'm saying, so so how would the neighbors feel about us then selling that property and building a house there? Where they want the open space to begin with. I I don't, I think that would be actually inserting ourselves more and not pleasing anyone.
Yeah, I don't I don't think the house is really an option with the there. So if you, I think we either, I don't think we want to take it and build a road on it. So you you take it and
Certainly wouldn't want to do that because there's no play, it wouldn't go anywhere. This is
If we want to take it and sell the quarters back, we could, but my, I I think my preference would be to to leave it as a private dispute and if they want to get the parking lot off, they'll have to go through the process of figuring out who the owner is.
Yeah, mine by main.
Greg?
That's that's all we needed. So we can, we we don't, we want to reply to the neighbors. And that's kind of where we left it, actually. So what, but we'll, but the board, one, you know, I think you're you're, the board correctly was interested in seeing if there was anything available.
But we, yeah, but we encourage them to obviously pursue, you know, if they're if they're unhappy, we encourage them to to pursue it as a private matter. Unfortunately, it's something that we're not going to get involved with.
Okay, very good.
All right. Next. Who decided this agenda was going to be this long?
Yeah.
Sorry. All right. Number fifteen, wastewater treatment facility. I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the emergency declaration for deficit spending from the sewer enterprise budget to address the immediate repairs associated with the wastewater treatment facilities rotating biological contractor equipment, and I will authorize use of digital signatures if approved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Armand. Um, Greg?
Well, so I as a I had, um, Justin and I had this on the TA report, the last meeting to say that, yes, one of the RBCs failed. Don't don't ask me more detail beyond, there's a thing called RBCs, it's in the wastewater treatment facility and it failed and we need it fixed. So but to fix it costs money and and that money, which we didn't budget for because we didn't know it was going to break. We need to, we need to get authorization for deficit spending into our enterprise account to do so, which is, that happens, like that's that that's a, that's not so atypical. I mean, you don't want it to happen, but sometimes stuff breaks, so you got to fix it. So I do, we do have to submit a request to the Department of Revenue to do that deficit spending, and that's what I'm asking through the board to authorize. But if you, and then simultaneously, Justin is going through the procurement process right now to get to to fix this. Uh, we just need the green light to spend the money. So yeah, so Justin can answer the technical questions.
All right, no problem. Uh, anyone have questions for either Justin or Greg regarding this?
It's your approximate cost.
So David, the estimated costs are anywhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand dollars. That's why they're not budgeted for. So we have you you might all be, uh, remember that in our sewer and water enterprise accounts, we have a line item called unforeseen and that's for emergency repairs. Unfortunately, RBCs are one of the most expensive processes within the wastewater treatment facility, and we technically have twelve of them. Two of them have failed and they're the primaries. To replace one RBC is roughly a million dollars. So repairing them is the appropriate place at this time. And until we start to execute our, um, our NFTs permit until, uh, until we have some indication on what the next process changes are, we have not included RBC replacement in our capital improvement plan besides five years from now, because we're really waiting at the mercy of NFTs and and the DEP to re-regulate our nitrogen discharge. So an RBC is really just this big giant wheel that has a symbiotic relationship with organic matter. That organic matter goes into the affluent and removes nitrogen. It's almost like it takes the nitrogen out to grow itself. So it's, um, it's something that these things typically, you run them into the ground. There is no, they just go. It's like a wheel bearing on a car. You just drive it, drive it, drive it, starts to make noise, boom, freezes up. The problem we had with ours is we're used to the bearings going, but the bearings on one of them actually discharge the media chamber, which is the large expense. So we're hoping that our, uh, our initial estimates are lower than two hundred thousand, but we're prepared for up to two hundred thousand dollars. And the beauty of this, which no one ever wants to hear, but our recent increases on water and sewer, specifically sewer, and making our rate increases to encompass and growing our retained earnings has allowed us to not panic and go to the general fund or to stabilization to handle this expense. We're able to secure this repair and do it in a manner with our retained earnings and still walk out of this in good good standings within our budget. Um, we'll adjust for it in the next rates, you know, we'll try to, we'll try to recapture those retained earnings. Maybe it's spread out over the next couple of years. But really, you know, we've set ourselves to put ourselves in a good position, but unfortunately, this isn't something we really want. Hopefully, the American recovery acts, that's producing money.
All right, uh, anyone else have any questions?
All right. We have, well, when these two come offline or they're they're linked, I assume, so we don't lose the other ten, I'm assuming they're all paired up then.
They're already offline. They seize immediately and the problem is sometimes we can manage
Offline and all twelve.
No, the two, the two are offline immediately. They seize and they stop. So part of the reason this is an emergency is because we have two levels of nitrogen discharge. We have a winter and a summer, and in the winter, we're allowed to discharge at a higher level of nitrogen and the summer, that nitrogen level drops. Kind of go to basic environmental, we're discharging in the ass of it, and in the summer, it's growing season. So we don't want to add nitrogen to the water because it creates algae booms. So that's our permit. Right now, we're not in violation of our discharge, but we're creeping to our summer months. And if we don't, this is a big, big repair. If we don't secure the funding now and execute the repair, we'll start to be in violation of our NFTs, which could include fines that are to the repair.
Making sure that we didn't have a shutdown or we'd need to shut down everything just to replace the two units.
No, no, they can be done.
You can keep flushing your toilets and and manager.
Back before we went to this current wastewater treatment plant, we used to have RBC issues a lot when it was our, and we had our own staff working it, and that was before we had the, uh, you know, the agreement with Viola and everything else. It was, it was always a disaster. We had a lot of them, it seemed.
So David, these are two that were not replaced, as you may remember, so that the history is in your favor. Is, um, a significant amount of resources was pumped into the wastewater treatment facility over the past fifteen years. Um, unfortunately, that those are large expenses, don't get me wrong. There was millions of dollars pumped in, but it wasn't able to address all twelve. So the newer ones are still, are still working just fine. These ones happen to be the oldest. They're twenty years plus past their life expectancy. So it's time. The problem is, like I said, is go, is that five year window of our new NFTs. If we have to change significantly, change how we discharge nitrogen, we might actually have to abandon RBCs and go to a different de-nitrification process, which comes at a large expense, ten, twenty million dollars. So we don't want to necessarily pump five million dollars in RBCs knowing or having the potential of a changeover. We know that de-nitrification is very high on EPA and the NFTs. So that that's part of the reason we know it's coming. So we're just trying to limp our RBCs. We have, I would say seventy-five percent of them are in pretty good shape. Twenty-five percent are past their useful life. We're trying to get to that point where DEP and EPA starts to identify that our nitrogen has to be drastically decreased. And if that's the case, then we'll approach a capital request in a re-treatment process and move towards planning for the future. This is kind of a tough one.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, all in favor, Jeff?
Yes.
Armand?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Thank you very much, Justin. Thank you for all of the explanations. And on number sixteen, the electric vehicle charging station. I will entertain a motion.
Uh, move to approve the grant agreement from Mass DEP uh, for the installation of electric vehicle charging station in the amount of fifty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-nine. Authorizing use of digital signature approved.
Thank you, Jeff. And I think we're going to hear from Justin again.
So we were awarded an EV grant. I think we discussed it in a memo previously. So we were awarded the grant, which is, um, something that we were pursuing, I think, actually in our RFP conversation with Sunpower. We were looking at potential EV stations in connection to those processes. And I think I told David at the time that there was a lot of grants that were opening up for electric vehicle charging stations, and this is actually the time. And they might open up, uh, further down the line. We approached, um, the most advantageous to the town as we didn't have a large capital pot to go at. So there was criteria for a hundred percent reimbursement, eighty percent, sixty. We chased a hundred percent reimbursement. So there will be a cost incurred by the town as we have to, um, pay for the cloud-based service for monitoring and we have to pay for a five-year warranty for the EV stations as we don't have um, in-house trained staff to work on electrical charging stations. Um, but that is roughly about thirty thousand dollars. I believe Greg has earmarked off to the side already in our budget conversations. So at this point, though, we received fifty-four thousand dollars to have these, um, EV stations installed. Eversource will actually provide um, the infrastructure work, meaning they will tie it into the grid. And then Commonwealth Electric is the vendor that we secured through DOE R. And they will actually install the electric vehicle charging stations. There is two that will go at the golf course, two at the town hall and two at the public library. To oh, to receive this grant, each one of those locations has to provide an ADA handicap parking spot specific for one of those electric vehicle charging stations. So at each location, one of those electric vehicle charging stations will be handicap accessible, while the other will be readily available for anybody to use. Um, and then they were specific to the infrastructure that Eversource was putting in play. They had to be designed in a location that was closest to the grid's network without interfering with a large amount of construction work. So town hall, there's a a utility pole um, between the upper and lower lot in the rear that they will be on the upper lot closest to River Street. Um, and then the public library, I believe the transformer is on the east side. Uh, kind of halfway between the parking lot and the entrance in the rear and, uh, Maynard Golf Course is actually at the front. Where the sign is, there's some parking up against the sign. That is where the, um, that is where the utility pole is that was able to be acquired. This may adjust once Eversource comes on site for a second time. Um, if they're willing to move these and incur the cost, it is always, um, it's kind of up to them at that point. So we were, uh, we were explaining that from our, our consultant that Eversource comes out and does their initial evaluation, which is part of the application, but sometimes they'll come out and if for some reason they're sitting on money, they may expand the infrastructure process. So sometimes there's little extras that you come to see. Other than that, this is the acceptance of the of the terms, the Commonwealth terms and and conditions, as you may have seen through many grant processes, and I think that's everything.
All right. Anyone have any questions for Justin?
So it wants these are installed are going to be similar to the one at Memorial Park where we're paying for it or the users are going to pay for it.
So our recommendation, uh, myself and Greg have spoken to this adamantly, um, is to come back to the board and set a user fee that at least recoups the electric use of each one of these stations with the option for the board to increase it for whatever purposes they want. Maybe it's to increase the Green Communities Fund to look for future green projects throughout the community. The sky's the limit with with how you want to do this, but at least our recommendation is at a minimum to recoup and recapture the electric costs. What you could also do is add a small revenue generator, which you could utilize to replace the current EV electric charging stations at Nayla Court to incorporate the same cloud monitoring system that these ones have, which will allow us to charge a user fee there and recapture the costs associated with the electric there. I think in my initial memo, Nayla Court roughly cost the community six hundred dollars a month in electric charges. And I might be throwing that number out there. I don't know if my memo's on here. It was captioned in my memo. It was, it was quite costly to the community for allowing, um, non non-recurring revenue to happen at those sites. So that, I think that's another conversation once we stop the carrying forward, Arman.
Okay. There were two portions that you said we were going to have to, uh, basically pick up the cost for. One, I recall Basically pick up the cost for, one I recall was the insurance because we don't have anybody that can uh, basically a warranty on the, the products. The second I thought was um, can you remind me what the second one was?
Yeah, so it's, it's a cloud-based app, but it's an integrated system, so the app. And the cloud-based service allows us as the community to one, monitor use, monitor electric peaks. We get to put it in our MEI data, which goes to our green communities, it's really good for understanding the impact of it. And number two is that through that app, we can set a user fee, we can set times, we can set whatever we want, we could say that. You have a two-hour limit and we can put out a, a sign that says two-hour charging limit, we can set the cloud service to shut off after two hours. We can set the fee for per hour, per kilowatt, kind of, it just gives us a lot of flexibility on how we want to utilize the system.
But we're going to be spending money in order to gain access to that cloud thing, is there any way, uh, first off, is it? Is it something that we have, absolutely have to have to, or can we set rates there or would they go far, way too far up? Similar to what you were just describing to Armand's question, can we set rates at that location that will pay for it?
So that's my suggestion is to set rates to recapture all of the cost of the stations.
Okay.
And you got, as the board would have to adopt those rates, um, but yes, David, I would look to have these pretty much self-sufficient.
That's what I was getting at, so the, although well, there's initially, it looks like there's going to be a charge. If everything goes per our plan, it will be at least revenue neutral.
Mm-hmm, and then the beauty with the cloud system too is we have the ability, so perfect example is if the libraries have any event. Maybe it's an event that we really want to draw to, we have the ability on the app to say on the weekend, we're not charging. Or we can, we, it, there's so much flexibility within it that.
I get, I get that aspect, I'm just, I'm just making sure, I, I just don't want us to be losing money on, on the deal beyond what we're already losing. And if we're spending additional money for something that we don't, if, if it's not a must-have for this app. But I can see how the app can actually help us make money in the long run, so I'm good.
So the, the question I have real quick is the um, regarding the revenue or offset that we would get. Again, correct me if I'm wrong, but is that why we are, that's what we put on the warrant to create the revolving account? So we can utilize the, that revenue and put it back into that program?
Into this program, yep, and then as Justin's saying, if we increase the rate beyond what is budgeted in the revolving account, that's free cash. Cause you're collecting it anyways, so then you can spend it on. Uh, more stuff, but.
Right, okay, all right, I just wanted to double check that.
Yep.
All right. Anyone have anything else? All right, then, all in favor, Armand? Armand, I think you're muted, you, you're not muted, okay, I didn't hear you though.
I said it very low.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes, thank you. Uh, all right, now, item number 17, the fire station construction, I will entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the agreement for access to the upper parking lot of Mill and Main in support of the construction of the new fire station. As presented and authorized the use of digital signatures.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Armand, all right, Greg?
I'll go quick, so we want, we want to be able to put stuff on, on the upper lot and the um, and Artemis, who's the owners of that lot, they own the mill. Um, they want an agreement and they, and they want to get paid for that agreement, so uh, they, they were paying them a lease. It comes out of the total cost of the construction project, so it's not, I'm not asking for any more money, um, but it's, it's beyond what I can approve. So it, I, I think the total was $54,000, if, if it's up to the max amount, which we think is, if I recall, about 18 months worth of construction. So it's Adam, I'm only, I can only approve up to $50,000, so bring it to the board. But it's, it's, we're already up there, like I just drove up past it today, we're, we're using it, the, the mill is trying to be a good partner to us, but. They, they want an agreement between the town and the mill, and so that's what this agreement is.
My recollection, I, I saw this when I was on the agenda and I was a little kind of frustrated. Cause my recollection is when we made our agreement, when we purchased the land. And they knew that we were going to be building the fire station at that location, they told us that we could use the upper parking lot for staging. And there was no talk about $50,000 leasing agreements and uh, I don't know if that was ever put in writing. But I'm certain that we had an agreement that we would be able to use that property for staging.
I, I believe you, uh, but I. When I asked him if we could get up there. This is, was it the what they gave me, so we, when I, I know they, they were kind of amenable, like they, their insurance rates were, were much higher than traditional. For the town and they, and I asked them if they could come down, they did, so I'm, I'm not saying they're completely, they're not trying to be uncooperative. But I think they're protecting their asset, which is this parking lot.
Yeah, but as I say, I think that there was already a, an agreement with them that, oh yeah, when you're building, you can use our property for staging.
Right.
Cause I remember that being a concern, where would we stage the pro, where would we stage all of the equipment and uh, the steel and everything else that's needed to build? And that was part of the discussion, so I'm a little disappointed because I think that was already discussed and lost in the, in the translation along the way.
And, and a parking lot that's not being used.
That's the point, that was the whole discussion that we had with them, and you know, I'm, I'm certain that that was part of. I didn't call Ron because I didn't want to give him a heart attack, but uh, I, I'm certain that that was part of the discussion.
I haven't seen that in writing, so which is.
I get it.
Right, right.
So Greg, do, just do a clarification, they're not partners, cause you said partners.
I mean, we are contractual partners if you agree to this.
Okay.
All right, uh, anyone have any other questions about it? I will say, I drove by there today.
The trees are down.
Holy cow.
Yeah.
That's, they move fast.
Fast, yeah.
Yep.
And I actually got complaints, a complaint letter about the fact that the trees came down. Um, as to, and to this, to this issue uh, so, somewhat. There's already, you know, I explained, well, we're going to put the driveway to the, to the back, we'll be on the right-hand side as you go in. Well, there's already a driveway there, why do you need it, I explained, that's private property, that's not our land, that's the, that is the upper parking lot. So anyway, so there are people that are upset about deforestation of the trees.
Yeah.
So.
Yep.
All right, so uh, all in favor, Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Reluctantly, yes. Certainly believe that we already had disagreement, but anyway, yes.
And I am yes as well, so thank you. Uh, moving on to item number 18, uh, financial conditions due to COVID-19, Greg?
All right, so I'll be quick, um, so there is this thing called the American Recovery. Oh, now for, I got what the whole acronym stood for, American Rescue Plan Act. And uh, and our new town accountant Lori Porter did a good job of summarizing it for the budget subcommittee, so I figured I should share it with the board as well. So stealing a little thunder from Jeff and, and David, but um, there's, you know, it looks like a lot of good news. So 3.3 million dollars could be, could be coming to, is estimated coming to the town, uh, that's great, and that's, that's the municipal, kind of like the unrestricted government aid. That um, Representative Hogan and uh, Senator Elder to referring to, like, there's kind of like two, sometimes there's two funding sources. So one goes to municipal and like the CARES Act, another one might go to like an education variant, so that may be happening, so um. Um, so there's still some questions we just don't have answered yet, um, but I wanted to, I wanted to share this with the board so you guys could see it. And, and according to um, Representative Hogan, I guess we're going to get more direction from the state in a couple of weeks. I wrote down May 10th.
May 10th.
Yeah, so that's great, but um, it's been on our radar for a bit, we're just, we, we look forward to getting more information about prohibited use and how to apply. And when, what the state needs to see, and same with CARES, this, sounds like a similar, probably a similar approach to CARES.
And one comment that I made at the budget subcommittee that I think has to be repeated just for public consumption. Is that this is not operational money that's coming in, it's, it's non-recurring, so we can't build a new program at the school. So we can't build a new program at town hall. On the back of this money that's coming in because it, it's not guaranteed for the, for the future years. And so it would not be smart budgeting to create a, a program. It's more for infrastructure projects and that's what the guidance is that we expect to get from the federal government.
Right.
Absolutely.
So uh, unless there's any questions from the board, it's getting late, so I'm trying to go fast, y'all, so unless there's any questions.
No worries, no questions? All right, we'll move on. Golf course management, RFP.
Right, so, so um, uh. The contract is coming due with Sterling Golf Management, and so it's on the warrants to request the town authorize the, the select board to. Um, have a contract longer than three years, three years is the, is the limit according to procurement law, so um, in, and it is, and in taste, in, into, nevermind.
Anticipation.
Anticipation of uh, of that being approved, either way, we should get going on the RFP and I've already reached out to town council to help do that. But I was curious if there was one or two members of the board that would like to participate, I, I assume uh, uh. Select word member De Silva would want to, but um, but he, and he's not here, so you can volunteer him. But uh, if, if there's anyone else who wants, I can reach out to Chris, I didn't want to make that assumption, so if, does anyone want?
I think he sat on it the last time and it makes sense, he's, as far as I know, he's the one that plays golf the most out of the five of us. And, and participates and plays there frequently, so uh, he's familiar, and he knows the business, he's familiar with it all, so. He's the best person that we've got and uh, he's not here, so.
Does anyone else want to participate?
You have to have two?
Nope.
Okay.
If he doesn't want it, um, let us know and we'll.
Okay. Okay, very good.
Should we vote on it?
Then he doesn't have a choice.
That's what happens when.
He'd have to come, he'd have to come in and appeal, appeal.
New guy on Sony committees, I, I feel confident in doing that right now, so.
If you want to, if you want to vote, you can, I was just, I was just looking for.
It always works that way when you miss a meeting, you know?
I know, tell you.
What else can we put him on?
All right, uh, number 20, uh, select board meeting schedule. So I kind of alluded this earlier when we talked about uh, the Solar Ray date. Um, we were going to have a, uh, an election on May 4th, so originally when we created the. Um, actually there's motion, so sorry, um, when we created the calendar, we scheduled it for May 5th. Now that there's no election on May 4th and where the public is used to us having meetings on Tuesdays. I'm wondering if it would, everyone would be amenable to moving it back to May 4th. So I will entertain a motion, now that I've said that.
I'll move to approve the changing of the day of the select board's meeting scheduled for Wednesday, May 5th, Tuesday, May 4th, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second, yeah.
Thank you, Armand, uh, Greg, did I leave anything out?
No, that's it.
Excellent, uh, anybody have any comments, questions, concerns about that?
Works for me.
All right, excellent, um, then all in favor, Armand?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And I am a yes, so we will now have Tuesday, May 4th. Okay, all right, sounds good, uh, now we have reached the town administrative report, sir, you're up.
Um, I'm just going to be very quick, so uh, a lot of good stuff in the, in the T A report, please take a look at it, a lot of the, a lot, you know, a lot of work going on. And Justin's got a lot of spotlight tonight, but I'll give him a couple more shout-outs to um, uh, he even drove me around downtown today. So I appreciate uh, Justin kind of walking it through and all the progress that we have going on. Uh, new fence over at um, over at the library, which is, which uh, Gene McGar, the library director is really excited about. Um, Steve Lerner had been trying to get a fence for a couple of years, we got a fence. Uh, and a lot of information from the police department, so I encourage the public and the board to, to look over and fire as well, so look over those reports. Um, I, I feel bad that I'm kind of like just going over all this quickly, but there's a lot of good information, so.
And Katie Young should get kudos for what she's been doing at the powder mill, um, yeah, I mean, John Deere Equipment Place.
Yes, I agree.
She's, she's worked really nicely there.
Oh, oh, one more thing to add uh, to the, to the board, um. I stopped by uh, Wellspring today, which is the, the one, the, the second shop to open marijuana retail. Establishment and um, today was technically their, their grand opening, although I, I didn't know that until, until I got the email up for the weekend. But today was their grand opening, but it wasn't very grand, it's not much to see, so um, but we uh, were trying to be cognizant of, of their operations. And see their impact to the community and um, and so the, and I think the planning board is trying to stay engaged with them to find out like the follow-up. Uh, uh, after they've opened and, and how their plans are being implemented, um, so just, that came up today, so I just want to tell the board. So I'm, I'm open for questions about the T A report.
When, when is the firefighter is going to get rid of their Christmas tree?
That's, I see that, I don't think that's, that's not. I don't know where that is.
Oh, that's at Powder Mill, um, Powder Mill Circle for the vaccine clinic.
Oh, yeah.
They still have the tree up, that's.
So that's, yeah, that's at the um, the housing authority.
Oh, nice.
How many, how many vaccines are, are we getting and distributing, Greg?
We had a hundred, uh, and we gave them all out, Megan, Megan was there actually, Megan, how did we do the other?
I know we did 27 at Powder Mill um, Circle. And handful more at the one, at the, the first one, so. I don't, yeah, I don't know if we had to send them back, but we're kind of wa, waiting for direction. Um, because we just finished doing a lot of our distribution when the Johnson and Johnson kind of pause happened, so.
I.
They kind of told us to keep some in the fridge until, until they tell us what to do, so um, that's.
That might be true, I, I, we, our intention was to use more, so we, we, so we, our priority was the two housing authorities. Um, any known, um, what are they called, uh, homebound, homebound. Um, which they continue to do, so I don't, I, I'm curious, I'm, I'm going to ask Kelly, Paul Johnic, the health agent, like just how many we've done. Um, and then there was a couple of over, we tried to get to town staff, like we're just looking for arms, if we have the shots, we need to get amused, otherwise the Department of Public Health won't give us more. So we, unless, unless something like the Johnson and Johnson thing comes up and they, and then they tell us to pause. But like, we, we, we need to get those, we need to get the shots out, but that's a good question, I'm curious as well, I'll, I'll try to keep the board informed as to progress.
Okay, anyone else? All right. Um, moving on to chair report, there were a ton of great things that happened this last two weeks. Um, so I will not share them all because I'm sure that uh, other board members, I saw other board members at a lot of the different events, so. Um, I will just stick to um, that I was lucky to attend uh, the swearing in. For one of the new firefighters, uh, Ronnie Rowe, uh, I, I was with Greg and Joanna and uh. And then his family and, and the firefighters and fire chief, uh, so it was great, you know, we commented about the fact that. Um, so the couple of things, actually, we commented about the fact that the swearing ins used to happen in person, it used to be, you know, in, in our chambers. And it was, we wanted to get back to some kind of level of personal attention, so. Um, but the other thing that's interesting that we should keep in mind is um, that a lot of times we appoint people here, but they. When we were in person, it was one of those things that we would make sure Becky would, would say right away. But you, now you need to go see the town clerk or you need to reach out or all your paperwork will be ready at the desk. And because we're on Zoom now, that kind of gets lost, I know Becky jumps in sometimes, but at the same time, sometimes it's difficult, there's a lot of conversations going on. So there could be the, the, there could be the misunderstanding that because we appointed them, they think that they are officially sworn in as members. So we should, I'm going to try to remember that the next time we appoint somebody. So, um, so there was that, uh, and I also just wanted to come in, shout out again to the Boy Scouts. Um, they, uh, they did a successful electronics and can drive a few weeks ago. Um, and then this past weekend, uh, Nick Kells, who is uh, going for his eagle. He moved forward with his project, which was cleaning up the blue-green trail along the ass of it and also. And also building bog bridges, so I haven't been down there again yet, um, but I look forward to it, I think the first time I knew that that trail existed. I think was last year when Katie talked about it, um, so. So I look forward to seeing what they've done. But again, that there, and I think I saw in the TA report that I think there's two other. Eagle Scouts that are, that are. Waiting with projects as well. So I think it's a great use of, of. Their passion and their knowledge and, and their drive to, to help better the town. So. So that is all I have. How about Jeff?
Just a couple of quick things. I, I want to thank the Siskiyou Centennial Committee again for an excellent job on Founder's Day. Just, it was. A well-executed event and the weather was perfect. But in addition, it was nice to see Sanctuary open up and to talk to Will Doyle. And then hear a bit about the future plans for that being it's a, a centerpiece of the town as well. So it was, in addition to the. The one fiftieth, it was nice to be inside of Sanctuary. And then the Charter Review Committee is going to have its first meeting to, no, Thursday night. So I would just. Let people know about that. If there's any input from this group, let me know.
What committee again? I'm sorry. Oh, Charter. Oh, good. Okay, finally.
Excellent. Arment?
I don't have much to say. The only thing that I would like to kind of mention, Justin and I had a lengthy conversation. This afternoon in regards to our trash collection services. And I think that he has some great proposals for. To present to us sometime in July, I think you said, Justin. I think it would be nice for us to listen to what he has to offer and, and. It was very enlightening for me to find out where we stand when it comes to those services that we provide. So it'll be good for us to, to get a better understanding and look at our options and decide what we want to do going forward.
Great. All right. Sounds good. Thank you, Arment. David?
Yep. I'll echo Jeff's comments about the event on Monday afternoon, which was wonderful. And then the other thing is more of a concern that. You know, I, I, I mentioned quite a bit, I go walking every day, twice a day, I take the same loop. And if, if part of it goes through one forty-one Parker Street, which is the old D C U building. That, you know, I walked through the parking lot. The van that I complained about about two months ago remains there that has the March expired. License plate. That's fine, but it did move. So they, they moved it from one spot to another, but that's not my issue. My issue is that every day without fail, the last probably week and a half. There are now cars that are basically using the one forty-one. Parking lot as an entrance way into. The paper store or the liquor store. And I come walking around and cars are coming in and they're not necessarily going slow. They're using it to avoid the stoplight. Because the light has turned red and they see it and they take their left-hand turn into that area and they drive around. And there have been two times where a car has come in pretty fast while I'm walking along the roadway. That's, I, I was very disappointed when they agreed to put in that, that entrance way from the building. Because that was the concern, that that would become a new entrance way to. The project. And it appears that more and more people are learning about the entrance being there, don't want to sit at the light as they approach from the Sudbury side. And are coming in and, and taking the left and going in to, to the area back there that way. It's dangerous for people walking and I, I noticed there's a little sign that says slow on one of the poles. But some of the people aren't going slow. So just something for the police to be aware of. I know it's not, it doesn't say entrance only for. You know, people who work here. So it's not illegal to be doing it. But it's going to become an entrance, an, an extra entrance way to the project. And that was intentionally made with one entrance way. And it's already starting to evolve into two. And I think the. I don't think they're using the, the entrance down towards the restaurant as they did at the outset when the first opened up. I don't see as many cars making that turn. But now this one, it's, it's a regular occurrence. I walk twice a day and almost every time I'm walking down there, there's a car making that, that entrance. So just something for the police to be aware of. All right, that's, that's all.
Okay. All right. Then I will, did I, I included everybody? All right. Just making sure. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moves to adjourn.
Thank you, Jeff, for the second. All in favor? Bye. Good night.